This is the TriPoint 2015 Situation Period. The county's funding market, the Bureau of the County's money fund is she started working, the legislature and the all seeing the TriPoint's financial partner. Welcome to now, uh, we're talking here, the district people. I have an action, Howard Dunlop. So, newsman is in the same area.
Alright, we're here for our 2016 meeting. Looks like we have, in front of me, I have a list of about 21 individuals that would like to speak. We did pretty good the other night. We got through seven, um, eight, eight, sorry. Um, we'd like to continue to make progress, at least that well or even better. I'm gonna offer this suggestion. Quantity isn't always quality. We're looking for new profound ideas or reasons that, that you feel however you, uh, with regard to the wind farm. If the point has been spoken by other individuals multiple times, if, if we can, if we can quickly move through that, uh, we would appreciate that. We're moving on, right now, farmers are getting a little anxious, and I know a lot of farmers are in this audience. We wanna try to wrap these up. If you guys keep going, I know as a board, we only have other than evenings to, to meet, so, if we try work through it in the week and we keep going, we're not gonna get through this before Harper or Plaidsy season. So, we're trying our best, you guys need to work with us as well. Alright, with that, uh, first individual I got on the list this evening, Jeff Byron, Brad Bryan, Jeff Bryan. Mr. Bryan, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a testimony and shall give in his case, now appearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, all you got? Alright, please state your name and address and who you represent for our court reporter in the U-88.
My name is Jeff Bryan. My address is 121 Press Lane, Avery, Illinois, and I am superintendent of TriPoint School District. I'm here as a representative of the TriPoint Board of Education, and joined here tonight by five members of the TriPoint School Board. The TriPoint School District has a twofold interest in this project. The first, six of the turbines in the proposed project lie within the TriPoint School District. The second is that implications of this project could influence additional projects in the northern or eastern Livingston County that happen to lie in the TriPoint School District. Back in October of 2014, I sent a letter to the Livingston County Board, the Ag Zone Emergency Services Committee members, and I would like to read that letter tonight. Much information has been circulated about the effect of a wind farm on public school district funding. Most recently in a flyer mailed to local postal customers with a section entitled "Negative Impact on School Funding and Enrollment." While I cannot talk specifically about the effect of all school districts in Illinois, because it changes from district to district, I can provide you with factual information about the financial effect to the TriPoint School District. But in order to do this, I need to supply you with some background on how school finances work. By far, the two largest contributors of operating funds to the TriPoint School District are local property taxes and general state aid. School districts in Illinois can levy a property tax to generate operating funds. This levy, excuse me, this levy usually stated in terms of a rate of hundred dollars of EAV for personal and commercial property, or in terms of a rate per hundred dollars of productivity index for farm ground, is combined with other local taxing bodies and is collected by the county or counties to be distributed to school districts. General state aid is composed of two components, the foundation formula that provides funds to school districts that cannot generate the foundation level established by the state, which is currently $6,119 per student, through their local property taxes, and also a supplemental general state aid, which is commonly called a poverty grant, based on the number of low income students in the school district. The foundation formula is used until schools reach ninety, can generate 90% of the foundation level, and then an alternative formula or a flat grant, flat grant formula is used. There is some truth to the claim or the flyer that a wind farm has a negative impact on school funding, but only insofar as the foundation formula portion of the state aid is concerned. Generally speaking, as local EAV increases, general state aid decreases. This would occur in any situation in which the EAV of the school district increases, and would most certainly take place with the addition of a wind farm within a school district. But there is also some inaccuracies in the flyer. In the case of the TriPoint School District, the initial monetary gain is not offset in the years following due to a decrease in state funding, but instead continues to generate additional operating funds for the school district. The State of, the State Board of Education in Illinois provides school districts an Excel spreadsheet to calculate general state aid based on local EAV. It includes average daily attendance, Department of Human Services low income count, and foundation level, all of the different components that go into figuring the formula reimbursement for a school district. Utilizing that spreadsheet and keeping all other factors the same, the effect of a wind farm in the TriPoint School District can be calculated, and I did some. We currently are expecting a wind farm to be put in place by EDF, electric terms, in northern Fort County. It will consist of about 88 2-megawatt wind turbines. The EAV of an 88 turbine wind farm has been inserted into the general state aid formula to see what the resulting change would be. There is a resulting decrease in state aid, but in the case of TriPoint, it's easily offset by the increase in the local property tax. I did a number of calculations on the back, um, the bottom line is, not the first year when we expect a big bump, um, in local taxes plus no change in, in, uh, state reimbursement, but when we look at the second year, um, TriPoint still will end up with over a million-dollar revenue enhancement by the addition of this 88 megawatt wind turbine. I'll be the first to admit that the factors affecting the TriPoint School District are different than those of any other school district in the area. The combination of low student population, high student poverty, our own EAV, number of wind turbines potentially located in the school district, places us in a unique situation to profit greatly from a wind farm or wind farms. Additional turbines in the TriPoint District would have little additional effect on general state aid. The purpose of this letter is to ask the Livingston County Board and Zone Ag Committee, um, to exercise caution as the ordinances for the construction of wind farms are being examined. Please do not hinder development on all areas of the county to satisfy the desires of individuals from only one part of the county, based on financial generalizations that are not true for all. If you have any questions about school funding or how I write my projections, uh, please do not hesitate to tell me at the office. And it was signed Jeff Bryan, Superintendent of TriPoint Schools. I'd like to add in conclusion, one additional item. I recently read a news article, um, that was put out sometime last fall, and it involved two particular school districts. It was Armstrong and Gifford. And in that news gazette article entitled "Turbines Boosting Government Bank Account Share," um, the numbers that I came up with very closely reflect the same type of numbers that came up for Armstrong and Gifford. Both those school districts and TriPoint experience great revenue enhancement, um, with the addition of wind farms. Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Mr. Bryan. Okay.
Mr. Bryan, how many turbines are proposed on this Pleasant Ridge wind farm are proposed to be in, in your school districts, I guess, exactly?
We have, we have six wind turbines that point to be projected map, project map, would be built in the southwestern corner of the TriPoint School District, like just south of the river, north of the school district line. Just those six turbines, um, would generate around 75,000 to 76,000 in tax dollars, would cost the school district about 48,000 in lost general state aid revenue after the first year, but that's still, that's a positive 45,000 here, and in our school district, that's a starting feature segment.
So, your, your, what you submitted as an exhibit, that's those dollars, a million dollars, not based on this Pleasant Ridge?
No, just, just the last one is, but at that time, um, I just wanted to share clearly the effect that that would have on the TriPoint School District, and this was a real life example that I was looking through, um, with EDF.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Bryan, just as I quickly look through this, and just so I understand better, as I look at the revenue differences in that, has, has any depreciation been factored into the turbines if the turbines are allowed? Did you take that into consideration?
In my calculations, in the second and third year, I did account for 4% depreciation. But again, our school district is very unique in the large amount of additional ground that goes into our total EAP. We have very little residential and very low commercial property, and those are the pieces of the, uh, property tax that we are seeing some decreases in, you know, in the recent past. But because of the way, um, farm ground is assessed using the productivity index, we see a 10% increase every year, um, in our property, in our farm ground assessment. Um, so when we take a wind farm of 0.1 million compared to our total EAP down of about 60 million, when you do a weighted average, we still come out ahead. The 4% decrease on 20 million does come close to the 10% increase that we see on around 60 million.
Okay, so the increase, as, as I look at the additional revenue, it's, it's technically, it's not generated from turbines, but rather is generated from the, the land value offset?
But there's two factors, Tony, it does sound, the money that's generated using a 4% appreciation, um, on the wind farm value for that year. So, it started out with 100%, maybe since 92 went down. But it also includes the built-in 10% increase that we could see on our farm ground assessment, and because we also have some residential and commercial properties, I didn't use the full 10%. We see on a general basis around 5% or 6% average over the last three years in our change in EAP. So, I actually use that 5% to 6% total EAP on the 60 million. So, but again, you still average a 5% to 6% decrease on 60, and a 4% decrease on 20, you still get around a 3.5% increase on your EAP each year. Okay, I did keep the catch rate constant on our years.
Okay. Alright, we have any other questions, Bryan? Any units of local government or other school districts have any questions? You need to make sure you let us know who your representative is, well.
Mark Slade, uh, Member of the President's Board of Education. You said you're not a very heavily populated district, right, the rural part of it?
Correct.
So, have you seen any of the studies done, like in O'Dell, or the study done on what have done the real estate property values, more in like the rural community, but it's a lot, it's a heavily populated area?
Well, I had recently seen an article that was, uh, Mark, Mike Rose did, and it was a study of all the counties in Illinois. And there was within maybe a couple outlier situations, the majority of those did not show that there was a decrease in EAPs.
Well, like in O'Dell area, it was an estimated 13% drop in. In that area, then, we could be, or you don't need to study, I guess, on that, if your property values decline, what it could do to your overall picture?
Well, I, I use actually a decrease in residential and commercial, you know, in my example, but again, percentage of farm ground assessment outweighs that right there. Um, so that's, you have the research and example I've done.
So, you used the decrease, but then you was also using an increase in farm, real estate value of a, of a change?
Yes. Well, we are in, uh, we are in the farm ground assessment bill as it is now. A once for a 10% increase in productivity per year on the average productivity on round of the school in Illinois. Now, Livingston County, about 1.112 on the productivity increase is right at the median. And so, a recent change in law, just a couple of years ago, said, hey, you don't go by your own farm ground assessment, you're gonna use 10% of the median. So, um, because there's such a great difference between what our productivity increase or productivity indexes and what our actual farm ground value is, we're gonna see that 10% jump on the farm ground for a number of years. And so, that's, it's like a get and give. And this is a farm year, they, they gave a presentation to us as superintendents in the Plain County area, brought us in a PowerPoint and explained how that's an entire process.
Okay, and now, my question is, did you use that figure then in your overall picture?
Yes, I did.
You, you used the increase of the farm rest?
I did.
Okay, one more question, thanks.
Any other units of local government or school districts? Alright, Mr. Blazer, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Alright, Mr. McCann, if you have some questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryan, thanks for coming. Who showed you the Maruus report?
What's that, that's?
Who showed you the Maruus report?
Um, it was, came across my desk, I've got a number of articles, I keep a file of wind turbines.
Okay, and how did that come across your desk?
Um, provided to be my misrepresentation.
He didn't, however, give you Mr. McCann's report, did he?
He did share Mr. McCann's report with me.
Okay, the one that showed that the deficit is over 20% value.
One that I don't personally believe, there's one that was written on.
That's nice, but you're not an expert.
No.
That's great advice, that's great advice. Mr. Chair, have you?
Mr. Maruus.
That's my fault, that's my fault.
Mr. McCann?
It's my fault. Are you an expert in the praise?
I'm not.
Thank you. When was this letter written?
Uh, my letter was written late October of 2014.
Okay, so it was written before your testimony before any of this case, correct?
Um, I believe I was at a hearing the night that I delivered. I'm not sure whether it was testimony to this or whether it was an Ag Zone committee.
It was an Ag Zone committee, it wasn't a ZDA.
Correct.
ZDA didn't start until after this.
Correct.
Okay, okay. And has anyone, anybody objected to this project, and there's been many, has anyone said that the wind turbines were actually decreasing tax revenues for your school district? Has anybody even hinted at that on behalf of the agenda, who have testified before this board?
In a flyer that was sent to?
No, he's a testimony before this board. Has anybody to your knowledge even said that at any point that the school district would lose money to the wind turbines generated?
I was not present for all the testimony.
Okay, so your opinion is 30, your school will, school district will get $35,000 extra here?
For the six wind turbines.
And you said that you used, you saw the Maruus report, you, you saw the McCann report, you didn't believe in the McCann report, it was worth the paper, it was worth it, but you still used decreased values for residential and commercial properties when you did your calculations, correct? Would you mind?
No, I, I don't need to.
I think the witness ought to be able to finish answering the question.
He did, he did.
He asked me a question, and I said, I don't want to hear anything, I don't need to be answered. Um, have you ever reviewed the Livingston County Zone?
Have I reviewed it?
Yes. Have you reviewed the special use standards?
I have, I have read through it one time, but I've not studied it to memory.
Have you looked at it to see if this particular project meets the standards for the Livingston County wind turbines?
I am not familiar enough with the locations, I've not seen the map except for the six that are within the TriPoint School District.
And you're not, you're not a land planner, correct?
Excuse me?
You're not a land planner?
No.
You're, you're background is education.
Yes.
That's your expertise, correct? Do you have an opinion as to whether, so I assume based on that, you have no opinion as to whether this proposed wind turbine development meets the special use standards? You're not here to testify at that, are you?
I'm not.
Okay. And in fact, if I walk through these standards, you wouldn't be able to testify with any area of expertise whether that these, those standards are not by these numbers, correct?
That's correct.
And I think the, the school board has been making, has decided to, decision, has made a decision, an official decision to stay neutral on this, though, correct?
I understand that's the stance that first central school took.
How about your school board, have they taken a position, official position one way or the other?
I am here under their approval.
That's not my question.
They are in favor.
They're in favor of the?
Of a wind farm in our school district.
Have they voted on that?
I don't recall during my two years at TriPoint that there was a vote taken on that, I cannot answer prior to my role.
Okay, so the two years you've been with TriPoint, which are the two years that we've been dealing with, which include the years that the energy has been before this board, your board has not taken a public position one way or the other as far as a public official vote, correct?
Alright, anybody in the audience have questions, Mr. Bryan? Anybody have any questions?
Bureau of the Customs, I guess a couple of questions were already asked. And Bureau of the Customs, uh, I just wondered in your school district, and your, uh, number of students in your school, has it gone up or down since you've been, how long have you been in?
This is my second viewpoint here. Is my position in this school going out of the envelope?
Okay, actually, the answer to your question is two different questions. If you want to know historically, it has gone down historically. Uh, within the last two years that I've been there, it has negatively, within 1%. You know, on one day, I get three kids move in, I can say my population has gone up. The next day, two kids move out, I can say we lost one. So, we are three step away.
How many students do you have?
We are around 430 students.
Okay, I guess I'm not totally familiar with TriPoint, that's elementary and high school?
It is new, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Three, eight, or twelve.
Okay, and, uh, I guess I was gonna ask about McCann's testimony, whether you heard that or not, but had you heard about the property values going down when a wind farm came in?
I've heard of, I've heard of the report.
Okay, I guess, uh, you wrote that letter obviously before all this new information has come out?
The new information would not have changed my report because it's based on the, the numbers for our school district, uh, they're pure numbers, EAP, low student population down, so, it's not my, you know, it's not my, um, my belief, it's the generation of numbers.
Seven of the pure numbers really are just not real numbers, I guess?
Well, they're real numbers, I mean, they represent dollars that we assess our taxpayers every year, that represent real dollars that we get from the state board every year.
And, uh, this might, not a lot of your district, I'm not sure, but, uh, some of the testimony here, in the first year, I guess you get the most money from these windmills, is that correct?
Well, I would explain that process. Because state aid lags one year behind real life, um, essentially, the money that I get from the state next year is based on last year's EAP, so there's a timeline in there. And they just generate the numbers of the state fast enough, um, to make those numbers run a timing. So, the first year that a wind farm is in production in a school district, the state doesn't even see that EAP yet. Wind farm doesn't produce, you know, actual property until it's, it's operational. Uh, so, if I had a wind farm that went into, uh, that started production in my school last year, um, I would just start to realize tax revenues this year. When I turn in my audit, uh, to the state or education, that they use that number to calculate the following year's EAP. So, I get full tax revenue from a farm, uh, plus I don't see any decrease in terms of state aid. The next year, I will see the consequent decrease because of that initial EAP.
And what about the last year? The last year, um, if I remember right, there's no payment the last year from the wind farms?
No, there, there actually is a payment, but, but this effect turns around backwards. Just like the first year that this takes place, the state isn't aware of it, the last year that a farm is in operation, they think you're getting tax revenues one more year. They think that you're gonna get tax revenue the next year because you got it that year. And so, the bump at the beginning is taken away at the end. So, the state pays you have more EAP in the last year than you actually do, just like they don't understand that, um, your EAP from that farm doesn't appear on their books until all the year, so the bump at the beginning, they just take away at the end.
If, uh, in that last year, how would you feel it would affect your school district not having that residence?
You know, it's gonna be an increasing revenue, I mean, obviously, it's a 20-year process, um, and any true school administrator would be putting some money aside each year, you know, and I expected a shortfall, I knew five years down the road, the state was gonna short me on money, I would sure try to take care of that. The same way, finally, five, 10, 20 years down the road, that I was gonna get shorted on tax money, I, for the financial person for school district, they put that money away in reserves that I'll toss through operations. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the audience?
Brad Sager, um, a couple of questions, are you aware of the property value in the O'Dell area from 2008 to 2009, the last four or five years, to 2012, 2013, the residential home sale prices, the average price fell by 15%?
I answered that, sir.
Okay, so I'm assuming that the report that I turned in that showed the property values declining over the last, over this time period was not something that Mr. Plaidsy gave you either?
I've not seen specifically O'Dell or that during the time.
A report from Brad Sager, you didn't see, is that second?
I, I did not see.
Okay, okay. Um, you talk about, uh, so, two of the factors, and one factor is EAP, and the second one is attendance. Would, would a drop in attendance have an effect on your, um, state aid or the money you can receive?
Yes, sir, no.
Okay, so if, if there's a potential for a loss in EAP and a potential for drop in revenue from, a decrease in students, how can you say that people, all that, all that is equal?
In the spreadsheet that I did, I kept those factors the same year to year to year. I used the same low income count each year, I used the same number of students each year, I used the same tax rate each year, so that the only variable was the difference in EAP. I'm not saying in real life that those things wouldn't all change, because they will every year. year, but in order to isolate, and my background, you know, as a chemistry teacher says, hey, if you're gonna experiment on a variable, you need to isolate that variable by itself. So I kept all of the factors the same to see what the effect of the one piece would be. But I agree with you that those things do naturally change over time.
So you agree that if, if the wind farms build, property values decrease by 15% as they happen in Odell area, people move out of the area, the data you're presenting really is, does not infallible at that point?
I'll object to that question, Mr. Chairman. He's asking the witness to accept his assumption that values will drop by 15%.
And what's wrong with that?
It's just his assumption.
It's based on evidence that's in the record, whether you agree with it or not is up to Mr. Blazer, but it's evidence that is in the record, so it's appropriate.
Well, if it's, he didn't state it as hypothetical, he stated it as hypothetical.
He said if.
Mr. Chairman, I have to rule.
Please.
All right, he did factor in several variables into his equation, and we did pose a hypothetical question, so let's, if, if you can answer it fairly, then try to answer it, if you can, you can.
Well, let's take that kind of one at a time. Let's go back to what the question was, can you, so start over again.
Okay, if we see a loss in property value, basically this off of a 15% loss that we see in Odell, the northwestern part of the county, if we see a 15% loss in residential property value, and we see a decline in, in students because people move out of the area, would that affect...
Let's say it one at a time.
No. Well, it's a total question.
Because you're asking me to calculate a spreadsheet that I can't calculate all those factors in my mind. I can give you general trends about different factors, but I can't put them all together into a spreadsheet without precise numbers.
I'm not asking precise numbers, I'm just saying would it change your numbers?
So would...
A loss in EAD and a loss in attendance.
Would a loss in EAD, would a loss in student numbers, was there a third factor?
Two, two factors.
Okay, if we indeed had a loss in EAD and a loss in student numbers, then... A loss in EAD would increase, my judgment would be.
Okay.
A loss of student numbers would decrease, so your answer is mixed.
So basically, a loss of EAD makes you more dependent on the state?
It, it makes the proportion of the state funds greater, yes.
So this doesn't make you more dependent? One thing is, is the offset farm ground value to the residential property, and you said it's 10%, and you, do you foresee that going on for the next 20 years?
I went through, I went through and serviced and was phoned by a farm bureau who had pushed the legislation through for productivity increase. And, you know, currently, the, I'm gonna use the Ford County average, we would say that the average piece of farm ground in Ford County, the productivity increase is something between 200 and 220 dollars. The real value of that ground is much much higher than that. And so to think that land values and production costs are gonna go up so high, and land values are gonna go down, and all the cost of inputs are gonna change so much to bring that calculation, really, the farm bureau says that that piece of farm ground is maybe between 200 and 220 dollars productivity increase, in real dollars today ought to be taxed about $800 productivity increase. Now, I'm kind of pulling that number out of my hat because it's about a four times greater number. So when we think about how many years it will take to take that ground that's a productivity increase, a productivity increase, 200 and some dollars, and move that 10% each year to get it up to almost $800, is a lot of years. So my answer, yeah, I think that land value increase is a pretty constant increase for us.
My last question, you mentioned you have six turbines in your school district, so that would leave approximately 130 in our school district. If you asked the residents in your district or in our district, how, if they have an opinion, one way or the other?
You know, I actually have two people that I talked to that live, I think, a couple miles from that, you know, and their, their stance was this generates revenue for our school district and allows us to provide more for our students they afford.
To the 30,000 residents in the county, you talked to two?
I haven't asked if I talked to any people in my school district that are close to the six. It's a very low populated area, I probably talked to 10% of the people in that area.
Have you talked to anyone from the Perry Central School?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Got a couple, got a lot, actually.
My name is Ann Lucy Anderson. Earlier, you spoke about the age that you got there, you get per student. You have a general age and you have a poverty age.
Yes.
Okay, and you gave us a number of just over $6,000 per student currently?
That's the foundation level that the state says is the lowest adequate number needed to be spent per student to provide education in the state of Illinois. So 6,119 is what is labeled as the foundation level for Illinois.
So, so the amount of money to get per student is $6,000, or it's the difference to make up that amount?
It is the difference to make up that amount. So, so what they do is they say, hey, you need to have 6,119, your local taxes generates, you know, we're just gonna say $3,000. And so maybe you get an additional poverty account because you've got some low income kids, they give you a little extra money, say that brings it up to 4,000. Then general state aid then is supposed to supply the difference between what you generate locally and your property taxes you get from the state. So we currently don't even get that from the state anymore, we're pro-rated at less than that because of the state financial condition. So we don't even get the amount of money we had promised as a school district.
Do you know how much you get per, how much you generate per student at this point in time for your school district?
We are, and...
A $5,000 one.
Okay, so the general aid to poverty, if they were to bring it up to the 6,119, that means you get in $1,000 per student.
Correct.
So 35,000 dollars a year basically is like 35 students. It provides the benefit of giving the 35, a thousand dollars per student, 35 students?
So, so we get, and, and kind of round the numbers, we get a little over a half a million dollars from the state, you know, poverty count and our general state aid. So I don't know how to calculate it or inform you to figure how much that is, you know, per kid, but it would be, you know, 35,000 divided by, you know, 420 kids.
Well, half a million dollars would be about $1,000 if you have five.
Sure.
So a lot of $1,000.
Okay.
So $35,000 a month to maybe take care of 35 kids.
Okay, yes, I would agree with it.
Okay. All right. I think that'll have...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Got one there.
Julie Fong, thank you. Earlier, you talked about your formula, and then you used a decreasing residential value. Could you explain further, further why you use that value height of that?
Over, you know, and when we build budgets, we try to use five or traits, just to get a good idea of whether values are going up or down. Every year, we get a report, I get four of them because I have, I have property in four different counties. My biggest is Livingston, Ford, but I also have a little in Urquhart. But I get a report every year that shows me what my farmland, the census did, and what my residential and commercial, and it's in those two different groups. And so we've had a downward trend for a number of years now in TriPoint School District in our commercial and residential properties. But like I said earlier, we've had about a 5% increase in EAD each year for the last five years. And so the farmland increase has overshadowed the residential increase decreases. Is that, is my suggestion?
Any other questions from the audience? I'm sure you speak real loud and clear.
I do, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Might the new governor be trying to change the debt ratio of the state of Illinois, might that change and might that lower your, not money you get, might it change that amount of your going to be getting?
There are two things going on, I mean, and I'll, I'll talk about Andy Menard's bill of last year. Andy Menard is a, you know, from Buckerville, and he actually proposed a different formula to figure general state aid for schools. He said, hey, you know, we've got some school districts in the state that are already generating, if we say the foundation level is at 6,000, they're generating 12,000 on their own, plus we're still giving them money, that's getting the flat grant money. Even though a district is getting that 6,119, there is a provision that if you're above that number, you're still gonna get 218 dollars per kid. And if you've got 10,000 kids, you're gonna get a little chunk of change then on top of what you already have. And one of his proposals is, hey, these wealthy school districts maybe need to say, hey, you know what, we don't need that extra money, we're already generating this amount locally, let's give some more money to the poor school districts. And in that formula that Andy Menard put together, TriPoint would come out ahead because of our low income count. So we would get more dollars, not from the formula part of it, but from the poverty grant portion of, we generate more dollars. Now, because there was a lot of suburban schools, we're gonna lose a lot of dollars. As the session has got together this year, they changed that, they have backed away from some of those, and even though TriPoint isn't a very modern district, we would be a loser in this current Senate bill one, which is looking at school funding changes. So that kind of scares me that we could get even less money from the state.
And so wealthier or larger, who, I don't encourage anybody, but larger, would also receive...
They would see a proportional, I mean, I'm gonna say a proportional change, but some of it depends on what the local EAD is and the low poverty count.
I know, okay. Did I, do I know the answer to what you told me? I think so.
Okay. I don't know that I answered it, but I tried to.
Thank you. We've got three towns in your major tripoint, Kenton, Piper City, and Colom, correct?
We actually have more than that. The original TriPoint years ago was Kenton, Colom, and Cambridge.
Okay.
And, right, Cambridge, which is way at the very north, and that's a part of where our district comes in, it's the P County. But then in addition to that, then when Piper, or Ford Central dissolved years ago, Piper City joined, and they did change, you know, state tripoint, even though now there's more than three points in it, and then the way the rural community of Stell is in it, too, it's got about 45 houses in it, so, so really, there's kind of five rural communities.
So do you know what the syntax are from those villages? You know, the idea, like, our village of Forest is getting half a mile, or very populated, which is not good.
We're gonna need to make sure we, we ask them things about school financing along with...
I'm not, I'm not willing to set back the board, I don't, I don't use time.
I see, but I was wondering.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience with questions?
Do you have existing turbines in your school district?
I do not.
Okay. And you said you had 400 rural students?
And it's a little, it's, in any given day, 420 something to 430 something.
Okay.
You know, I lost a family fight the other day, and it changed my school population by 1%, you know.
Right, right.
It's that size and scale.
Okay, so the 35,000 number that you're talking about, that's the second year increase in the turbine, is that right?
Yes.
And then what's the third year?
I didn't figure the third year, something less. It would be a little less.
And obviously, you would say 18 years would go down every year, possibly go up after 18, slightly, right?
Um, you know, I, I just, I did not run the numbers out too clear. I just wanted to get a general first idea.
Okay, when you calculated this 35,000 number, did you include the no max funds there in the figure?
What?
A lot of funds that you can levy, some of them have a maximum caption, how much you...
Oh, I used, I used the tax rate of 517, which was our tax rate for last year.
Okay, um, yes, that means that you did include money that you're actually not gonna get, so your figure's actually about 40% high. If you stick around tonight, I can find out why that is. So, and then it goes down with you, so your average...
Sorry, is there a question or is there... Questions, these are questions. Questions on camera.
Okay. Do you know what your average amount would be if you averaged a 35K over the lifetime it's about? Not average 35K, but the average extra income predicted over the life of the five.
I did not think of her number.
Okay. And just one thing that you did, how would you use the money to increase student learning and how would you measure it? Are you gonna, what would you use?
Well, I mean, obviously, you're, you're in a situation like the Perry Central School District, we're in deficit spending. We are actually drawing from cash reserves from our teachers, buy student supplies, run our school buses up and down the road, and so it's gonna be for those things.
So you're desperate.
Not even desperate for the Perry Central, but...
So if any, how many, if your family cannot sleep at night because of these turbines, we're gonna have over 100 families within a mile after this turbine?
Mr. Chairman, that's...
All right.
Is that acceptable?
There's children, school funding questions. Come on, stick with us on this.
Okay. That's it. Thanks.
Any other questions from the audience? Anybody else?
First of all, you guys reached a, as I understand it, your school board has authorized you to come here and make these statements?
There are five members with the city.
Okay, and did you hold a public hearing with your citizens on this particular topic before you reached that conclusion?
We did not.
Were there any members of the public present when you made that decision?
It was a school board meeting, so there's, almost always, we almost have some members present.
And how many were there then?
You know, we average...
Less than 50?
Oh, less than 50, absolutely.
Less than 10?
What do we like?
Less than 5?
No.
Okay. On this Maruus report that you saw back in October, how closely did you read that? If I ask you some questions, would you know the answer?
You know, I could know some general questions about it. I read a little more closely the summary, or the...
The exact...
The methodology, I didn't really understand what a Jedi peace meant, but I remember that that's part of the methodology, but I didn't really know what that meant.
Uh-huh, okay. And, but you, you gleaned from it that there was a conclusion that generally speaking, there was no decrease in EAD due to wind farms? If I misheard your testimony correctly?
That was my take on the report.
Okay. So under the formula, current standard discussion is pretty clear, that the numbers that you came up with are related to the current funding... came up with are related to the current funding regime, correct?
Yes, the current formula is in place as of today.
And did you run the numbers or any of the others suggested?
I don't have access to those formulas, I've been helping with this topic.
Okay. And do you think that your position or the position of your board would change if you thought that some children's health were affected?
Josh.
Was it, they made a policy decision, it sounds like, and what I'm trying to understand is, did they consider any other factors? Or was it purely financial? Was it purely financial?
I can't answer what went through the mind of seven different organizations.
In your mind, was it purely financial?
I actually am, what I'm willing, within a few, within, I don't know what the setback is, on wind farms, I'm going to have, within the township that I live, 88 wind farms. You know, I grew up with a three windmill, I don't, in Long Beach. You know, it's south there breathing and pumping water, you know. So my mother grew up next to a factory that used rock embers. When she first moved to the farm, she couldn't swim because it was too quiet. Everybody has things in the news. And thanks to.
Have you studied other factors?
I have no. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience with questions? Alright, does anyone have any other? I just had one. You did, you did all of this, and I just want to, want to be sure. You said you spoke at the board meeting. Because this question will come up, it's going in somebody's mind. Was it on the agenda? Was it an agenda item at board meeting?
Yes.
It was?
Yes, as a discussion.
Okay, okay. Alright. Kelly, say it, Kelly Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next on my list is John Dassal.
Dassal.
Dassal, John Dassal. Mr. Dassal, let me just ask you this, at 7:25, if I stop and put a break in your, in your presentation, would you be upset or would you rather get a break now and just go right through? Do you want to do that? Alright, so let's take, let's take 10 minutes, we've got 7:24, let's get rolling, we've got the 7, in the dress for our recorder, and then you made it, John Dassal, from the general on 55 East, 1100 North Road.
I'm off here tonight on behalf of myself, as well as several landowners and other private citizens that I work with concerning wildlife, and I'm here to talk to you about some of the concerns we have and the related land use with that. I was raised in southeastern Lexington County on a farm. From a very young age, I was instilled with the conservation ethic and a respect for the land. And I was taught that that was very important if we were going to pass on this land to future generations, and it was to be profitable and sustainable. So from there, I went to Southern Illinois University, where I obtained my bachelor's science and master's of science degree in zoology. You can see a few of my, I guess, credentials listed here, a few publications and professional presentations, just to give you a little bit of background on me. I worked with wildlife for over six years before my wife and I had the opportunity to move back to the farm, which was one of the things that we always wanted to do. I still continue to this day to work with many private landowners on wildlife habitat and various other projects. I currently manage or consult on over 1,300 acres. That number is probably closer to 1,500 now, and it seems like it's growing every day. We're extremely concerned about the possible effects that this may have on the wildlife and the resulting change in the land use that that may take care of. After reviewing the evidence and the additional literature review, I still believe our concerns are warranted. Why we have these concerns, I want to go over some of the overview of the, a little bit of the evidence that was presented by the applicant, and why there might be some limitations to the surveys and tax use and a few of the other things that was presented. Go over a little bit of the foundation that they laid with the literature they presented and included in their report. Go over, just to touch briefly on a couple of the IDNR recommendations that we haven't talked about yet, and then talk about whether this project is in compliance with the standards for the special use, which is what we're here for, this is a special use program. So why we still have these concerns? As I alluded to, there's not much scientific evidence that has been presented in this area to alleviate these concerns. There was a lot of paperwork that I waded through, but I didn't come up with that much as far as evidence on how this would not be detrimental or even no effect on wildlife. I'm going to specifically talk, focus on the HADEN report, which is Pleasant Ridge, Exhibit 103. Talk about the methods and the two metrics that they measured, which is species riches and bird use, and some of the results within that. So something about the methodology that stuck out right away was that the points were not random that they sampled. And when you're designing a scientific study that has the ability to be randomized, that is the number one most important thing that you need to do, is to randomize your points and your selection. If you don't do this, it creates a bias. It's not conscious, you're not doing it on purpose, but that's what, that's what comes out of it. So if you don't select your points randomly, and this is out of their report, they selected it for relatively even coverage of the area in survey representative habitats. Like I said, you don't consciously select for certain habitats, but if you don't randomly select your points, in reality, you are selecting for certain attributes. And then along with that, at these points, when they did the bird surveys, they collected numerous other variables, which I'll come back to that. So let's start with the seasonal timing of the cats. They did the cats in spring, fall, and winter, stating that these are seasons of high bird use. I question whether winter is a season of high bird use in central Illinois, but if you're going to include winter, why don't you include summer? And I would argue that maybe summer might be more important, as this includes the symbol of birds that nest and breed here, as well as raise their young. And they state multiple times in that report that there is available nesting habitat, even though we are in agricultural area, there's still nesting habitat available. It seems like a flaw to leave out these breeding and nesting birds when you're talking about establishing a baseline, which was the whole point of this study, was to establish a baseline and find out what is in the area. So we were, we talked a little bit about nesting birds. Surveys were not conducted in the summer due to the proponents of till agriculture. And Mr. Ramble stated, birds don't nest, just don't nest in crop fields. Well, that, that is not the truth. It's well accepted in the scientific literature that many species of upland nesting birds nest in crop fields. And these can range from some of our upland game birds, such as the pheasant, to the northern bobbit, to many species of waterfowl, and even some sorebirds. You see a picture of a nest here, this is an endangered upland sandpiper nest in one of our crop fields. So that's a, that's one, birds do nest in crop fields. In fact, there's a, there's many acres of no-till crops, which were not separated out from the till acres, and these no-till crops actually provide somewhat suitable habitat for nesting birds as well. In fact, a sorb and his colleagues found that there was almost four times as many species and nine times as many nests in no-till fields compared to till fields. So there is that opportunity for nesting habitats. And with ever-expanding use of cover crops as well, this provided even more additional suitable habitat for these nesting birds. So let's get back to the two things that they measured and how they measured them. Like I said, the two things they measured were species richness and bird use. What they used to measure them is called an index. So what is an index? An index is just a simple estimator of abundance. It's not a population estimate, it's not an overall abundance estimate, it's a simple abundance estimator. And it usually tracks changes over time at certain points throughout the area. It is not used to be compared between sites or between regions. So if we take a look here at species richness, so what that means is it's just simply the number of species, different species, that they found throughout the surveys. If we take a look here at the summary of the species richness findings, and if we look at the unique species category, that's the individual species they found. So they found 59 different species in the spring. If we notice, this goes down as we move down the chart, as well as the soot surveys conducted and number of visits conducted. The applicant claimed that this was due to spring, fall, and winter being, due, that the variation in the species richness was due to the seasons. But if we look at this, we see declining number of visits, we see declining number of surveys. So to me, it looks like it might be possible that it's just basically based on the fact that as the number of times we survey go down, the number of birds we find goes down. So that, and there's, there's ways to account for that, and that's what I want to talk about here. You could have simply controlled this variation that you may find by simply having the same number of visits or surveys per season. So at nine visits or nine surveys through all the seasons, and that accounts for that variation, there would be no question on what the variability is due to. Also, you could have ran a simple statistical test, and that would have told you whether season was the reason, was it survey number, was it, was it the visit number? Which one accounted for the variation? So then we move into why there, maybe they had an underestimation due to this. And that has to do with detection probability. And detection probability is just the probability that you will detect every individual that is out there in that survey area. And there's two places for error here. The first one is available, was that bird available? Did it call, or was it available to see? And if it was available, did the observer see it? And this can vary by, it can vary by species, habitat, observer, weather, a whole host of other factors. So if you were to go out and do a bird survey, I would ask you this question, do you think that you would spot every bird within 100 meters, either by sight or by sound, every small bird within 100 meters, or every large bird within 800 meters of you? And that's what they did. And that's the point I'm trying to make, is the detection probability, you need to account for that in your analysis or your results, otherwise you have a severe underestimation of what's possibly out there. So Berman said, using just the count of birds detected as an index of abundance is neither scientifically sound nor reliable. It is necessary to adjust the counts for this detection probability. And Rosensohn even goes a little bit further and says, overwhelming reliance on index count in recent HADEN studies is a matter of great concern. An index count should not be expected of providing viable info or valid basis for inference. Now, I'm not sure I would go that far and say that there's no use for them, but they do have their place, but you have to outline your limitations and understand how you're using them. So let's go into a little bit of the results that they found in an analysis or lack thereof. They reported a simple proportion for bird use, so how many birds per 20-minute surveys they found per species. After thumbing through the literature and my experience, I, I struggled to find anywhere where this was in line with any kind of, the way this data was reported was in line with any kind of other peer-reviewed scientific literature. There also, like I said before, there was no statistical test to adjust for detection probability or include other variables such as habitat, which everybody in this room knows, bird abundance varies by habitat. So you should include some kind of test to include that in there. And like I said before, indices should not be used to compare between sites, they are used to appear across time at the same site. And throughout this report, they, they go back to Pleasant Ridge Wind Farm and wind farms all over the Midwest, where they're comparing these numbers, but that's not, that's not what an index is used for. So another thing they have in the results, which I thought was interesting, is if we take a look at this, I got the raptors outlined here, and these are incidental observations, which is basically observations of birds that they seen when they were not during the surveys, so if they were driving around from point to point or whatever. And you notice, they found 100 individual raptors during the surveys, and outside of the surveys, they found 77 raptors. So they almost found as many raptors outside of the surveys as they did within the surveys. So this leads me to think that maybe there might be an underestimation like I was suggesting. Another important raptor that they, they collected to a survey was owls, and they're a very important raptor in the area. Most owls are nocturnal, or they are prepuscular, which means they're active during low light times of the day, early in the morning, or late at night. It's inappropriate, in the, in the analysis, they included, they included owls in their bird use. It's inappropriate to include a species in your analysis, because it does not fit the methods that you use. One claim that I found interesting was no flocks of birds, no large flocks of birds. I thought that was pretty interesting. Millions of birds migrate through Illinois, they recorded several of those flocks during the American Golden Clover surveys. This, this picture right here, I don't know if you can see it, but that's definitely a thing to consider, large flocks of birds, and that's in the southeastern part of the county here, one of our farms, and it looks like that quite often. But this, this graph up here shows pictures of bander recoveries, which is what waterfowl biologists use to track migration. So as you can see, the red areas are high incidences of bander recovery. So we see right here to the north, there's a really red area, right here to the south, there's a really red area. So what does that mean? Birds move south in the fall, correct? So they move right through this area. So there's a lot of birds migrating through this area, and I thought it was kind of interesting that they said, you know, that there was no large flocks of birds. I know they didn't see any in their surveys, but that doesn't mean that you, you can, you know, put that in there. This again is pictures of some rare birds, and whooping cranes outside of February, all the rest of these are on our farm in the southeastern part of the county. You can see for yourself, there's some whooping crane pictures I took next to our farm just about three weeks ago. So there are many and rare birds that come through this area much more than people who aren't out every day looking at them, don't really realize until you start to look for them. Something else I wanted to cover was the raptor miss, did surveys just briefly, they found two in 2009, two in 2014. I know two additional ones in 2014, that doesn't mean this study is flawed in this area, I just wanted to point out that this detection probability, just because they didn't find it, doesn't mean it wasn't there. And then I also wanted to point out, probably the most important thing is this last point, there are two species of state-endangered raptors that nest on the ground. And obviously, these species were not taken into account during these surveys. These surveys were done for tree nesting birds only. There was a northern herier, which was found quite a bit in the surveys and a lot in the incidental observation as well, and the short-eared owl, both of them nest on the ground. So let's go back to the, what I call the foundation for this report, when I was writing scientific papers, that's what I call the foundation, it's the background, it's the literature that you research and you build, you build a report or a paper based on this research. Within this report, there's eighty-seven pieces of literature cited. Of them, only twenty-five of them would be considered peer-reviewed. Eight of them related to the general biology or ecology of the birds, or outlining some of the methods of why they're used them. Um, seven are presentations or theses related to wind energy birds. And only ten of them relate to wind energy in birds and are published in peer-reviewed scientific journals. Eleven of the literature cited items are websites or documents that just general information come from. And the part that was most alarming to me was fifty-two are similar reports by private companies, mostly for the use by wind energy and governmental agencies and other agencies. These are not peer-reviewed, they're not published, they're not generally released to the public, except in this case, some of them can't get out. And Mr. Vandewall has even stated that he was not giving all this information via applicant in the data. And why is that concerning is because nobody else has really looked over these or went over them to see what's in them or how they're, they're conducted. And so it's, it's just, it, it concerns me, I guess. Here's a general overview of those ten studies that I said were in peer-reviewed journals, um, based on, uh, birds and wind turbines. And I'm not going to go through here, you can read them if you want, or you can get a copy of it, but most of them suggest, all of them suggest more research is needed, which is always a red flag, and even you don't know enough yet to make that determination on what the real effect is. All of, not all of them, a fair amount of them suggest that there is some effect on birds, whether that's effect is significant or not significant, that, that is the question, but there is some effect out of the law on here. Uh, like, like I said briefly, I want to cover a couple IDNR recommendations here. I want to point out that I think, I mean, I wouldn't say most people think that IDNR is a, a group of well-educated and trained professionals here, and I think the disregard shown for many of the recommendations kind of worries me from a wildlife standpoint. Um, the first one I want to point out is the, is the fall curtail in the period recommendation number five. Uh, the IDNR proposed three full months, including October, the applicant proposes October seventh. So there's a twenty-six percent decrease in the amount of time that they are willing to curtail the wind turbines. So then we move on to, uh, why might this be important? Well, this is a study out of the journal Science, it was done in two thousand eleven by Oils. It suggested that, in Livingston County, providing ecological services that amount to upwards of forty-three million dollars annually. So I thought that was an interesting thing right there. And that's, uh, exhibit number two, she's passing out here. Um, recommendation number seven, I'd like to talk about briefly, um, it's about obtaining an incidental tape permit for the northern long-eared owl. And the applicant believed that it was not necessary, but the state recommended that they obtain a state permit, which was pretty interesting to me, that they didn't think it was necessary if the state agency wanted them to obtain a state permit. But that kind of comes to my exhibit number three there, which you, which a few of you have in front of you there. Inverge was taking the court in West Virginia a few years back over something very similar to this, and the judge ruled that due to the lack of surveys that were recommended by the Fish and Wildlife Service, they, that would have discovered the endangered Indiana bat, they had to stop construction until they obtained this incidental tape permit, and they also limited the hours and duration of operation for that, that wind farm. Um, just briefly, the aquatic studies twelve through fifteen, um, just because Mr. Vandewall said that there was no research, I don't disagree with him at all, but that doesn't mean that there's no effect on, on, on the fish and aquatic organisms. And that means maybe that we should be doing some research to find out if there is. Uh, the beginning of research is often based on anecdotal findings, and maybe that's a step in the right direction. Uh, to me, as, as an entity exploiting the resource, they should be the first ones and the leader in research to ensure that there's no harmful, it's not harmful in any way. So now I'll wrap up here with why I believe this is not in compliance with the standards for special use. I'll go over number one, which is the comprehensive plan, and then number five, I believe this, well, there's no question this will be injurious to the use and enjoyment, or reduce the value of native properties, um, when it comes to wildlife and the land use associated with that. In some cases, if this does, I'm not saying it is going to affect the wildlife, it isn't, but if it does affect the wildlife, some of these properties may essentially become worthless to those landowners who use them for those purposes. So then we go back to the comprehensive plan here, look at section one point two point six, one word, open space there. I mean, there's multiple points down below, we even encourage the preservation of open space, which this does not for sure. Then we go to two, one point two point seven, environmental and natural resource goals, um, supporting USDA state Illinois conservation reserve enhancement program, which are easement programs. You're not going to see easements when these guys already have easements on all this property, so you're no longer promoting those programs. Preserving and adding open space, again, under natural resources. Providing incentives to encourage private landowners to reduce flood losses, preserve fine land, farmland, conserve wildlife habitat, and expand recreational areas. And you've seen this before, I think it was in, uh, Mr. Bootgard's presentation, but it's the four, uh, the forwards of Livingston County comprehensive plan, I thought was a good way to end up my presentation, but although we have strong tradition of private property rights in this country, in this, yeah, in this country, we also recognize that there must be limits to the use of an individual piece of property. Locating a heavy industry or racetrack or slaughterhouse in a residential area or anywhere else could damage the quality of life of those who live there. And that is truly what I believe may happen if this project goes through. Uh, thank you for your time, and I appreciate all you guys' hard work, everyone's been a long process, so, uh, I appreciate it, and if anybody has any questions, I know that was pretty quick. If there are any questions at this moment, Mr. Blaser, do you have any questions?
I will, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Nesso, have you ever testified as an expert witness on wildlife and natural reserves?
No, sir.
Have you ever been qualified as an expert witness on wildlife and natural reserves?
I certainly have an educational background, and I, I would leave it up to the person who's qualified equals expert.
So I'm going to try it this way, have you ever been involved in any proceeding like this?
No, no, sir.
You mentioned a few species, three of them, I think, you, you mentioned the Oakland sandpiper?
Correct.
Uh, I, I get, you have reviewed IDNR's consultation letter?
Correct.
And that's, uh, was originally to point ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I assume you're aware that IDNR, in its consultation letter, concluded that the proposed action of this project is unlikely to adversely affect the essential habitat of the Oakland sandpiper?
I did, yes.
Okay. And then you mentioned the northern herier?
Yes, sir.
And I assume you're aware that it's IDNR's opinion that, uh, absent documentation of any breeding sites within the project area, the project cannot be set to adversely affect an essential habitat for the northern herier?
It has been identified in the county, I don't know if it's been identified in that specific area.
But if you are aware of the...
Yes, I'm aware, that's what that said.
Okay. And then you mentioned short-eared owls?
Yes, sir.
And staying with IDNR's consultation letter, it was originally one ten, um, you recall that, uh, Mr. Shank, S-H-A-K, from IDNR, in the context of the short-eared owl discusses something called the Simly State Habitat Area?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, he said Pleasant Ridge wind turb- turbines, are you aware that, Mr. Shank, we have the IDNR said, Pleasant Ridge wind turbines will be visible from the Simly State Habitat area, however, Ford County has authorized a wind farm whose turbines wind built will be directly adjacent to that area. Any adverse effects experienced in the area will be attributed to those machines. Were you aware that I've been citing IDNR's...
Yeah, I don't know if you were remiss or team, but I don't know.
It's on the... Okay. Um, you're familiar with the, uh, US Fish and Wildlife Service?
Correct.
Have you ever worked with them or for them?
Yes, in conjunction with them, yes.
In what contest?
Uh, through wildlife habitat projects in multiple states.
And what is the role of the US Fish and Wildlife Service?
To preserve our wildlife resources.
And they manage and enforce the Federal Division Species Act and the Library Tree Treaty Act, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, do you know what an Efficient Wildlife Service technical assistance letter is?
Yes.
Could you describe your understanding of what that is?
Uh, was their letter given okay to the project, basically, that they thought was all right?
Well, I, I mean, generally, do you know, we'll, we'll get to the...
I mean, this is the first time I've seen that.
Okay. So you've never seen a technical assistance letter issued by the Efficient Wildlife Service in my business? Have you seen one in any other contest?
No, I guess not.
Okay. Uh, have you reviewed that letter, Pleasant Ridge's environmental?
Yeah, I've reviewed it.
Okay. Um, so you're aware of the Official Wildlife Services recommendations with respect to this project?
Yes, sir.
Including their limitations with respect to curtail of the turbines?
Yes, sir.
Do you disagree with the Official Wildlife Services recommendations for this project?
I don't necessarily disagree, but I know Efficient Wildlife Service is strapped right now, and there's a lot of things that they push through, and, I mean, it's a state, what I was talking about was it's a state agency suggesting they get a state tape permit, not a federal current.
Well, that's, but all I'm asking, are, are you...
No, I don't, no, I don't disagree with, you know, what they said, no.
And are you suggesting that the Official Wildlife Services Division for Wildlife didn't give this project the appropriate attention when they issued it?
No, that's, that's not what I'm suggesting at all.
And you mentioned, uh, the, the IDNR's discussion regarding aquatic organisms?
Yes, sir.
How much research have you done with respect to waterfowl reserves?
Not a whole lot, but like I said, and Mr. Vandewall said, there's no research, and I, I looked around myself and couldn't find little to nothing on them as well.
And then, uh, you mentioned, where did it appear? The, uh, Beach Ridge Project at West Virginia, which is your exhibit number three?
Yes, sir.
Um, now, this is from December two thousand nine, right?
Correct, yes.
So it was over five years ago.
Yes.
Uh, do you know what the ultimate resolution of this matter was?
Um, I know that they, like I said, that they required them to stop, they got the permit, they continued building, and that they had to curtail or turn off the turbines at certain times of the day and certain seasons, that's all I know beyond that, it was hard to find additional information.
So you are aware that the project ultimately was built and today is...
Oh, yeah, it's wrong.
Okay. And I, I get the sense you are aware that Inverge and the US Fish and Wildlife Service cooperated with respect to both a technical assistance letter...
Correct, yeah, because they had to give the incidental tape permit, of course.
Right. So they worked with the Official Wildlife Service to resolve the issues that were raised in that case in two thousand nine, correct?
Right, but my point was that they were recommended to do this study, but they didn't do, and then they were forced to shut down to do this study and, or get the permit. That, that, yes, I, this, I agree.
And in this case, have you seen anything from the Official Wildlife Service indicating that they've recommended that, uh, Inverge do something that they haven't done?
Uh, no, no, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I, I forgot you, local government or school districts, I was going to, you know, okay.
I wasn't missing opportunity.
Mr.... All right. Anybody in the audience have any questions?
Hi, this is Amber Scherzer. I believe that a part of your presentation, you were talking about, um, some of the IDNR suggestions for this project, and one of them was, um, asking them to, asking Inverge to get tape permits?
Correct.
And I believe that during the Inverge testimony, they said they didn't see the need to get tape permits.
And that's exactly what I was talking about, Mr. Blaser, that's all you do, that's recommendation number seven, I think it was, that the state wanted them to get a state endangered incidental tape permit. The Fish and Wildlife Service said they didn't believe that was necessary. But I see it as a state agency who manages our state wildlife, suggests that you should do that, maybe that's a good idea, just to do it for you.
So they did it, say they had to get one, but they, they suggested that...
Yes, correct, maybe yes, they're recommendations, they're not...
Um, with your background, could you explain what a tape permit actually means?
It just gives them, so under the Endangered Species Act, it's illegal to take or to hold an endangered bird. It just gives them the ability, there's, they give these incidental tape permits out to allow them to take what they call or harvest or, you know, kill a bird or whatever, they give them out so that they cannot be prosecuted under the Endangered Species Act, basically is the gist of it.
So what you're saying is, um, a turbine, if it kills a bird, they, under the law, they can't be prosecuted, so...
I don't know the legalities of it, but that's basically, that they're okaying us to take, or okaying the applicant to take an endangered species or kill an endangered species essentially.
So if we don't build a hundred and thirty-six turbines in our habitat here, um, will we be killing or taking any endangered species?
Correct, correct, yes.
Won't we? That's all.
Any other questions from the audience?
Yep. Um, your testimony is that the efficacy of the reviews depends on availability and tech, protection, correct?
I'm suggesting that due to the adjustments due to detection probability, that the underestimates of bird use and species richness are underestimated.
So from the detection part of it, that relates to the expertise of the observer?
Partially, that's one of the factors, and just the ability, the ability of the observer to, it's just not physically possible to detect every bird in that hundred meter or eight hundred meters from large birds. That's, it's just impossible to detect that, so studies have come up with ways to adjust the physical test and, you know, to take care of that, so that you come up with a better estimate, in other words.
How does, how's a person qualified to do these studies? Is there like a bar exam for bird counting?
No, anybody can do, I mean, you have to go through a different process, essentially, like everybody else, but essentially, if one of you wanted to do it, and they thought you were qualified, you could do it.
What, you don't know the difference between a...
Well, you have to be able to judge by your birds by sight and by sound, mostly by sound. So you can see where the air comes from.
Well, if I brought some of my city friends down here, they'd be like, this is brown bird, it's a white bird. So how do you qualify someone to make these, to do these studies? And my follow-up question is, were the people who did these studies actually qualified, in your opinion?
You're qualified to do these studies based on your education and your experience, so I was six years of school and studied wildlife, and I spent over six years in the wildlife field in, all over this country and in Canada. That qualified me to do one, but, you know, it's the education and experience, just like anything else, and I really can't comment to the, I don't know who did this, well, I mean, I know the names, but I don't know who they are, and I don't know the qualifications of them.
I mean, that was my question, whether you can review their actual qualifications?
No, I don't know them personally, no.
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience? Anybody else? Counting stand, now it comes. Thank you, Mrs. Blazer.
Thank you.
All right, next coming on the list, they have Lori Share.
Lori?
Share. Share.
Share.
Lori Share. We're gonna screw our names tonight, sorry.
Sorry.
All right. Ms. Share, please raise your right hand. If you solemnly swear a testament, you shall give in this case down here, show me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it? All right, please state your name and address for a court recorder, and then you can be in this new direction.
Okay. Lori Share, one oh one eight five North two thousand East Road, Maryberry. People create their own story. Each person's story has a past, a present, and a future. We may be in different places in our story, but we have an opportunity each day to write part of our story. My story in this community began a little over eleven years ago when I met my husband. Mark was raised here, and we wanted to build a house in the country. I was unsure of the idea at first. I'd never lived in the country. I grew up in a really small town, but still not the country. I thought it might be too quiet and lonely, but I thought I could give it a try. So we decided to purchase five acres for Mark's parents. We built our home, and I love living in the country. It is very quiet, very relaxing, and very peaceful, and not lonely at all. Our story continues as we have two boys, Jack eight and Tony seven, and our dog Lucy. They also love living in the country. They love great big yards of plains. We want our children to continue to enjoy the peace and quiet. As we think about writing in the future, we would like to include constructing a building on our property and making changes to our home. However, now that we know a wind farm might be constructed, we have put those plans on hold. We have even thrown the idea of moving in the midst of options. Our story will continue to develop as time goes on, with some unexpected details and some planned details. Just as each person has a story, each community also has a story. The story of our community has a rich past that our ancestors worked hard to develop. The community is the sum of many parts: the people, the land, the values, the morals, customs, traditions, and rituals. In our community, there is a strong sense of pride and respect. People may not always agree with each other, but they are willing to listen. It is a place where people have worked hard to write their individual stories by creating homes, by building relationships with their neighbors and other community members. The people of this community also contribute to the overall well-being by volunteering, donating money, and serving our local committees and boards. People in this committee, in this community are willing to fight for saving the integrity of it. We want to be part of writing our own story in our community. We are willing to work with the appropriate people to write a story that continues to support the values, values, and morals that have been established. We don't want our story to be about how we live in a place that an industrial wind farm has taken over the precious community we call home. We don't want our story to include how the wind turbines are keeping people up at night because of the noise, how the wind turbines are interfering with the learning process of our junior high students or other students in the district, how the property values have decreased and people are not moving in, how our animals have been negatively affected, how the tourism business has decreased. We want our story to be closer to the mission statement of the Village of Forest. Printed in the Village of Forest newsletter, the mission statement is, "The Village of Forest is to be committed to preserving, protecting, and enhancing our unique rural community character, values, and quality of life. Its sound fiscal management, attention to improving our residents' property values, and providing the community with excellent services, safety, and recreational needs shall be our guiding principles." These words are part of the story of our community. Excuse me, members of our community created this mission statement because they believe in our community. Mission and vision statements, standards and policies guide all of us to work together to write the appropriate story. Sometimes, we need to be reminded of the guidelines that have been established to help us to continue to create the story we have worked hard to build. So, why am I, why am I talking about writing stories? Each person who lives in this community has a part in writing our story. Each person who has been appointed or elected to a board has a unique and significant opportunity to write their part of our story. We are in a point in our story that can change the quality of life in our community forever. As we think about the evidence and personal statements that have been shared, please consider how your vote will change the story of this community. Each of you has an opportunity to preserve and protect the community. Please make the right decision for the overall community. As we look to how this decision will affect the present and the future, I think it is important to learn from the writers of our past. Mark's grandmother shared this wise statement with him about doing business. If someone is trying to sell you something, and it's all roses, and they didn't tell you about the thorns, look out for them. Do you want to be part of a story that potentially sells the beauty of a rural community and the integrity of our values, beliefs, and morals to an industrial wind farm? I hope not. Please vote no.
Any other questions for Mrs. Share tonight? Uh, means the local government, school districts? All right. Mr. Blazer, have you any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Luga, and you have a question?
Ms. Share, one more time, sir.
All right. Uh, anybody in the audience with questions for Mrs. Share? Anybody out there? TPA again? Counting say, counting down. Thank you, Mrs. Share. All right, starting back on our list, next they have Cheryl Hoffman. Cheryl Hoffman, are you available this evening? Just a side note here, it looks like on that, Carrie Followwell. So Carrie Followwell will be the next to speak this evening, um, right away through this. So just so you can have her ready. All right, Cheryl Hoffman, please raise your right hand. If you solemnly swear a testament, you shall give in this case down here, show me the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got it? All right. Please state your name and address for a court recorder, and then go ahead.
I'm Cheryl Hoffman, fifty-six oh one, North two thousand forty, East Road, Maryberry, Maryland. Um, I started my journey, I guess, with, um, looking at school numbers when I was talking to an ISP regional financial consultant. Uh, I was taking classes, and I had to talk to him about a project, person's numbers, and so I sat down with him to learn more. And, um, we were forecasting, doing some forecasting for a project, for a class. And, um, I said, we had one point we were looking into with revenue, and I said, oh, there's a wind farm lady coming into our district, um, you know, it's in the port. So I said, we're gonna have more revenue. Yeah. So I said, we're gonna have, um, more, nice and decent revenue. And he looked at me and says, well, and I thought, uh-oh. He said, um, most schools think that they're going to get a wind, a windfall from these turbines. He said, most, however, end up in about the same position. Um, some, a little to the good, but most are about the same position when it's all said and done. Okay, so I said, why is that? So he told me about the general saying, we, we've heard about it tonight, we've heard about it from Dr. Moons, we've heard about it many times, so, so that's nothing new. He said, the second thing, though, that most people don't think about is that there's different levies for the school. And there are, we have several levies, I'll go over it next slide. Uh, some of them have max tax rates and some of them do not. And he said, a lot of times when, um, different entities are, who are trying to make the income feel good for schools, they include all the tax rates and say, this is new income to the school. I'll, we'll go over why it's really not, not all of it. And I'm not in any way saying there's no income from the wind bilts, that, that, that would not be correct to say, um, I just wanna make that clear. Um, this is a chart of the different levies for the Prairie Central School District. I'm just gonna hold this. Uh, the first seven levies, uh, I'm gonna go over the, I guess I'll go over more quick. The education fund is the fund that pays our teachers, it pays our paraprofessionals, it pays our cafeteria workers, it pays the school supplies. That's worth the bulk of the income for, for the revenues and expenses that go to the school. As you can see, it has the highest tax rate, so we, we know that's where most of the operations go through. The second, um, levy on the list is operations and maintenance, that's the building fund. It pays for, the CESTO again, it pays for repairs to the school, it pays for, um, heat, light, utility. Transportation is our, is third on the list. Obviously, in our school district, we are three hundred eighty-six square miles, we are the largest school district in square miles in, in the state of Illinois. Um, obviously, our buses run a lot, and that is a very large expenditure for Prairie Central. Working cash fund is, um, is basically the savings account for the school, it's a, um, a rainy day, basically, savings for rainy day. Life safety pays for, um, safety features for the school. Um, it pays for, I mean, it's the, the smoke detectors, the fire alarms, those kinds of expenditures. Leasing pays for anything with a school leases, that would be, um, computers, copiers, and whatnot. Um, special education, that levy is to help educate students with special needs. Um, IMR and social security run through the pension fund, and, um, they are, um, that pays for the retirement. Pays for the retirement of, um, non-certified staff, and then social security pays for, um, social security and vital Medicare taxes for all employees. Um, the TOR levy is, is basically a risk management fund, is to prevent legal, help and help prevent legal fraud for this school district. The bond levies are to pay for bonds that have been previously issued, and now the tax payments, or the payments are due, we have to levy to pay the payment payments. The first seven in the list do have maximum tax rates. The current tax rates in the middle column are, also happens to be the maximum tax rates because Prairie Central is maximum, is levying at the maximum rate right now for those levies. The bottom four do not have maximums. The reason is because those, um, those are special funds, those, the fund, the money that goes into each of those, um, the levies and funds are restricted. You, you cannot spend any money from the IMR Social Security Fund, except for on IMR Social Security. You can't transfer that money, you can't spend that money on anything other than what it does it in for. It's the same with the TOR fund, you cannot spend it on anything other than what's in the risk management plan. And bonds, the only thing you can spend that money on is, is your bonds. The first, um, the first seven, those tax rates add up to four point one nine percent. The second, and then if you include the bottom three, it comes to four point eight two-ish one, um, percent. The bond rates vary across the district because of the, right now, we're carrying different bonds from, um, Chinoa, Old Prairie Central, and Prairie Central, so that varies across the district. Okay, I'm gonna talk a little bit, um, I actually make a lot of slides and go over and over this, how to explain this to people who don't have a, um, financial background, and I'm learning along with everybody else. Okay, so an example of a maximum tax, tax rate, thank you, um, again, that's our education fund, we are, we are levying at the maximum, we can't, we can't levy any higher tax rate. Okay. Um, for our tax, this made up taxing body has two homes, Sally and Joe live in this taxing body. Each home have a home that's assessed a hundred thousand dollars, not homes, but three hundred thousand dollar homes. Um, this tax, this taxing body has a maximum tax rate of five percent. Okay, the total D A D is two hundred thousand for this little taxing body. So the taxing body will levy, and then will collect no more than ten thousand dollars in total. Each homeowner would pay five thousand dollars in property taxes, okay? Pat decides to move into this little taxing body. She builds a house, if you hear me, they built a house, um, another three hundred thousand dollar home, it's assessed at a hundred thousand dollars. Now, the taxing body says, ooh, hey, there's more, here's more D A D, more making tax, and I can still tax at that same five percent rate. So now I'm gonna levy fifteen thousand dollars, I now have fifteen thousand dollars to spend. Each property will, will pay five thousand dollars, okay? Because there's now three hundred thousand dollars of assessed value to put on there. So for levies, there is no maximum tax rates, the taxing body wins with more assessed property, with more assessed property. Okay, if, as one more person in the room, you get that much more money. Now, let's look at the no max tax rates. That's, this is the specialized, um, levies that are, you cannot spend the money on anything other than what you need that money for, okay? Same people, Sally and Joe, they're sitting in their nice three hundred thousand dollar homes that are assessed a hundred thousand dollars each. Um, if the taxing body in the first year levies for ten thousand, it says, I need ten thousand dollars to pay whatever is in this max tax rate, or no max tax rate. Um, each homeowner would begin, pay that same five thousand dollars. Same, same as the previous example. Now, in this example, Pat goes in, she says, I'm ready to move here, she built a home, she built a home. And, um, same value, a hundred thousand dollar homes. In this instance, the taxing body cannot say, oh, hey, there's another house, I can now levy more. No, it still only has legal obligations of ten thousand dollars. So he will still levy ten thousand dollars, and then that means that, um, each person that said paying five thousand will now pay three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars each, okay? Um, so the taxpayer wins in this situation, when there's more taxing body, each. When there's more taxing body, each person pays less to meet that same requirement. Does that make sense? This was really hard to come up with. Okay, so moving on. Okay, what I did was, I looked at the report that Dr. Loomis put out, and thinking back to what the ISP financial analyst said, I thought, well, did they use the higher tax rate or did they use the other tax rate? So I looked back and I calculated, and by vote, they used that 4.8215% instead of the 4.19%. So his baseline, he says, well, the average of all those years, those 23 years or whatever it was, is 441,000 average across the year that the school district would gain. But in reality, when you look down at the 4.19%, it's actually 288,000 that the school district would gain. The windmill, let me clarify this, the windmill is still paying the 441,000, I hope they are. But the new money to the school district is really only the 288,000. So while the windmill are paying that, that part of that is reducing the burden to the rest of the taxpayers, but it's still not new money to the school district. We can't spend, say, oh, we're gonna give 441,000 more and hire eight more teachers. No, we're only gonna actually get 288,000 more, but the other, that difference is gonna help relieve the rest of the taxpayers for everyone else. Okay, there's a big difference. So as I said, the Dr. Loomis is clear, does not actually reflect new money to the school district. It does, is very close to what they actually do pay, I understand that. Even this overstate figure is just 2% of the current $22 million school budget. That's a pretty small number, I think. And when you look at the, when you take out those no-max funds, it's about 1.3% of the current school budget. So next. We all know that general state aid is affected. So we started looking at, what if the wind farm actually does cause drop in attendance at Prairie Central? General state aid isn't calculated based on average daily attendance. Average daily attendance is not enrollment. So if we have 22,130 kids enrolled in our district right now, 1,900 members school on a given day, that is our average daily attendance. Families moving away will cause a decrease in ADA and enrollment. But students who are homesick because they didn't sleep last night will also cause a decrease in ADA. So a 1% decrease in ADA is about 20 students for Prairie Central. A simple example of how we can get to that 20, this is, you know, hypothetical. If three families of four students moved away from the district, and then, that would be 12 kids. And then four students across the district stay home because their windmill lights and noise kept them awake all night. And then another four students became sick because they hadn't been sleeping well and they fell sick with the flu. Or they actually do have some adverse health effects because of the turbines. Don't worry, I'm gonna be sure of it. So this last chart shows the various options or scenarios, I guess. The first column is Dr. Loomis's, referring as the no-max funds included, showing the average across the 23 years, the 441,000 for the school district. The second column is the one that I think is more relevant, showing new money to the school district, the 288,000. The third column shows a 1% attendance decrease, and that would drop the average for the 23 years down to 178,000, which is just 0.81% of the budget. A 1.5% decrease in attendance is 30 children a day. That's $123,000. A 2% attendance decrease would result in an hourly average of 23 years of $68,000. That's $32 per student, per year for the windmill. Again, I'm not saying that there's not a benefit, a financial benefit to the windmill. We just need to look at how much of the financial benefit the windmills are.
Do we have any questions at this point? All right. Local school districts, unit of local government. Put it out there. Mr. Blazer.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I knew this was coming.
Next one is exhibit 183, October 16, 2014 minutes, again, you attended that meeting?
Yes.
And you recognize these minutes? Next one is exhibit 303, minutes, board meeting minutes, January 15, 2015. Again, you attended that meeting?
Yes.
And you recognize these minutes? And then the last one is, plus which, 307, March 19, 2015, board meeting, you attended that meeting?
Yes.
And that, obviously, that was just last month, right?
Yes.
Okay, and you recognize these minutes, correct? And these are all available on the school district website, okay?
Right.
Okay, that's all I have, just to turn it.
Ms. Luthen, any questions?
Ms. Hoffman, one thing I did say is what we worked for, obviously, I just found out that you work for the Prairie Central School District.
Yes.
And it appears you're also the chief of business operations.
My title changes daily. My title changes daily.
But one of them appears to be chief of business operations, at least according to events.
What's that?
At least according to events.
Yeah.
Can you tell us what your duties are for this Prairie Central School District, just a general summary?
Mainly, anything that has to do with money, I kind of touch. I don't do the budget, I don't do forecasting, I don't do, what else I don't do? I run payroll, I oversee bill paying, I make sure that there's separation duties, try to make sure there's no fraud going on, no embezzlement.
So you're pretty familiar with the finances of the school district?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any members of the audience have questions of Ms. Hoffman?
Any here? I just have one question. Your presentation, it gave a lot of numbers. And I just wondered if it would be relevant to any other school district, including Pride.
No, it would not, it's only relevant to Prairie Central.
Just a question. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience have questions? Anybody else? David Sligel?
David Sligel, one real quick question, I was, I probably should have done this in the city government question, but anyway. I'm curious, the max and no-max ones, do you know if that applies to city accounting and tax and bodies also?
They have max funds and no-max funds, they are a little different because, like, say, very little cities counties under tax cap, so they are handled a little bit differently. But for those schools not tax cap, because we're part of a planning authority, they're not tax cap, so they're not tax cap.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the audience have questions? Anybody in the EDA, if we have any questions, I just can ask you, if I ask another individual this, that talks school finance, can you tell me by?
Unless I'm a little hot, I pass the CSBO, I'm in my last class, I have three more assignments for my last class.
Okay, so you do have the CSBO endorsement?
I will, as soon as I get my masters in, I'll have the CSBO endorsement.
Superintendent endorsement?
What's that?
You have superintendent endorsement?
Yes.
Okay. EDA, Congress, yeah, Congress. Thank you, Hoffman. All right, we're gonna take, since we took a break a little early, let's just take five minutes now. Ian Penauer, Ian Penauer. If you're available, please make your way up here and go on. All right, Ian Penauer, Mr. Penauer, can you please raise your right hand? Do you still have a testimony or a testimony to give in this case down here and show me the truth? The whole truth, nothing but the truth, so you got it?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, please state your name and address for report recorder and go ahead and begin.
Steve Penauer, Department of Drive, you remember? I know you have to keep it short, mine's, mine's. Steve, Steve Penauer, Department of Drive, you remember? I know you have to keep it short, so I'm just gonna make a few observations here. I wasn't quite prepared after this evening, but we'll do it anyway. I wanted to refer back to the November 24th hearing. It was answering the previous question, and to me, this kind of struck out like a red flag. If I could just read from the testimony here. Mr. Blazer says, that's correct, Mr. Pernell, you would ask one of the EDA members, how many residents were within the project boundary, how many are within one mile of the project? We have our land agent here, Mr. Andy Downey, who's prepared to be sworn and advise what those members are. Well, Mr. Downey got him testified, I have a land agent and project manager. But then he went on to say that our total of 298 residents is within the project boundary. This is just residences, no, not acres. Breaking it down, there were 74 of those residents within the participating parcels, and there are 224 consequently non-participating in the project. So I would predict, I thought, that's kind of a red flag. Either those, 74% of those residents were either ignored or they chose not to participate. And that was just kind of glossed over, and it wasn't expounded upon by the end. And this is within the project. So, and of course, we all know the way to one course, and most of the residents of course were not, they're not, were not asked their opinion at all on what they thought of the situation. And another thing, somebody said this was new technology, one of the witnesses. And so I went onto Wikipedia, which, we can all trust Wikipedia, I know. But anyway, it was kind of a, kind of a light in a way, but it says, "The first municipal to use multiple wind electric turbines in the USA may have been by turbine system in Pennybone, North Dakota in 1940." These, you know, these were commercial wind turbines and stuff. Then it looks on to say that in 1980, the world's first wind farm consisting of 20, 30 kilowatt wind turbines was installed at Garage Town in New Hampshire. So that's, that's been 35 years now, and it has really been trying to get off the ground. And they really haven't gotten anywhere without the political backing. And it is a, it is a political football right now, might say. So the, you know, if the funding to drive the projects, then where are we? And I just had something else that occurred to me when the people were talking. We have, right now, all the wind turbines in the state are relatively new. And are, and they, you know, they're nice white paint on and stuff like that. But we all know water towers have to be painted every 10 or 15 years to keep the allergy rust and that kind of stuff off. So, you know, just the inside, there's likely something there to consider. Anyway, I'm just gonna wrangle, because I wasn't quite prepared to speak this evening. But we had, earlier this evening, we had a witness come in and talk from, well, I would say superintendent of Pride of our school district, and he was trying to put some numbers together. And, which was fine, and I don't doubt he did have the right numbers for his district. But I noticed, as soon as he was done speaking, he left. He didn't want to hear any other testimony. So that is one of our concerns, that, you know, other than the finances, what is positive about these things? And for most of us, it's, a lot of the people in the area, or the one, I should say, the pro people, it seems to be, love the finances, the people that don't like it, it's a quality of life issue. And nothing has been said yet to convince me that it'll better quality of life. So like I say, I wasn't quite prepared this evening, so that's all I have to mention this evening, so, thank you.
Do we have any questions at this point? All right, school districts, local government. Mr. Blazer?
No, sir.
Okay, Mr. Luthen, yeah, real quick.
Mr. Penauer, I apologize, you gave numbers, footprint, participating versus not participating?
Yeah, I have, sir.
You were a little quick for me, because you had a little, my hand, my notes aren't there.
Okay, this came from the November 24th hearing. And it's in the, on page 342 of the November 24th. Quote by Mr. Downey, that there was 298 residences, residences within the project boundary. I just wanted to stress that these are residences, not, maybe not, that I can't remember what you're reading here. But he said, breaking it down, there's 74 of those residences within participating parcels, and there are 224 consequently non-participating in the project. So either these people chose to participate, or they were just ignored.
Thank you, the numbers you did, I'll do it quick for you, so I, that's what I, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, anybody else with questions? Anybody in the audience have questions, Mr. Penauer? Anybody with questions? The EDA again, Congress, yeah, Congress. Great. Thank you, Mr. Penauer. Thank you, Mr. Penauer. Next on my list, they are Tom Ambrose. Tom Ambrose? Mr. Ambrose, can you please raise your hand? Do you solemnly swear at this point, you shall give the state now and here, you shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, all you got? All right, please state your name and address for our court recorder and then go ahead and begin.
My name is Tom Ambrose. 19840 East 300 North Road, Fairberry. I wanna start my comments out of the night by saying that I believe strongly in everything I say tonight, but in no time do I intend to be rude or disrespectful to anyone, or to take anything at a personal level. I just wanted to start that out. Sometimes it sounds good up here, sometimes it comes out here, it's, you know, anyway. My wife, Lynn, and I live on a farm in South of Fairberry, Belvoir Township. We also farm in Indian Grove and Volka Townships. All of these townships are within the footprint of this proposed industrial wind project. I don't where, I don't know for sure where the term wind farm came from, but what I can tell you is, as a farmer, a cluster of industrial wind turbines is not a farm. There is no agriculture taking place inside a turbine, and there is no food or fiber being grown and produced inside a cluster of turbines. As a matter of fact, wind turbines can be considered an anti-farm, because they actually prevent agriculture from taking place on the turbine site and on the access roads that lead to and from them. Let's be honest here for a moment, and recognize these turbines for what they actually are. They are an industrial complex, and Invenergy is asking Livingston County to allow them to build this industrial complex on land that is zoned agricultural. And let's be clear again, this is not just run-of-the-mill farmland. This is some of the richest, darkest, blackest, most, most fertile farmland in the entire world. My uncle, who was born here in Livingston County and farmed within a six-mile radius of his birth site, had a unique way of describing this land. He said, "This is some of the best ground that lays outdoors." To me, he really hit the nail on the head. Other than our families, this land is perhaps the greatest asset we possess. Its value lies far beyond the income that it can produce for its own. It is our heritage, and it is our legacy. It is our responsibility, as it was our parents, our grandparents, for some of us, our great-grandparents, to preserve it, protect it, and pass it on to the next generation in as good or better condition than it was when we got it. That is a sacred obligation, and, and is not to be taken lightly. There has been some talk in these hearings of local jobs, and I believe that some local 150 members have come to these hearings to tell us how this project will provide jobs for them. I am sure if this project is approved, some local 150 members will get jobs within, within the project. Those jobs, I understand, are slated to last about seven months during the construction phase. At the end of the seven months or so, these workers will go home to their families, and they will leave the innocent people of Southeast Livingston County to deal with the effects of these 136 industrial turbines for the next 25 to 35 years, and they will never give us another thought. To them, this is a job, just another project to complete. To us, it's our families, our homes, our property, our health, our view, our peaceful, quiet country life, and for many of us, it's our life's work. They risk nothing while expecting us to risk everything we value so that they can earn seven months wages. That, ladies and gentlemen, is not a good trade, and it is one I am not willing to make. There's been some question about aerial application of these hearings. For those of you who are not farmers or not involved in production agriculture, I will attempt to explain why some farmers are concerned. There are basically two types of application methods farmers use when they need to spray their crops. Ground application and aerial application. Both of these application methods have their pluses and minuses, but we won't get into that here tonight. Suffice to say that by the time July 1st arrives, the corn and bean crops in this area are tall. Corn can be anywhere from seven to 10 feet tall, and beans, three to four feet tall. Crops this size take a special type of sprayer if a farmer chooses to use ground application. These are the sprayers with the tall narrow tires in the front and the rear. A person my height can walk upright underneath the chassis of this sprayer, and they are designed to run through tall crops without damaging them. These machines are extremely expensive, as you might imagine, and many farmers do not own this type of a sprayer, and so they would need to hire their local crop supplier if they need their crop sprayed. If we have an outbreak of disease or an insect infestation that involves hundreds of thousands of acres that need to be sprayed within a very narrow window of opportunity, there may well not be enough ground application equipment available to get everything sprayed. Without aerial application, it's viable additional resource. Some fields or farms may not get sprayed before irreversible damage has occurred to the crop. Remember, airplanes do not go straight up and straight down. So even if you don't have turbines on your farm, if your neighbors do, that plane may not have time to get down to your property and back up to M40 and counters turbines on the neighbor's property. There may have been some confusion in early readings about our views of private property rights. We believe strongly in private property rights. We are all owners of private property, and we believe in the, in the right to use and enjoy our property as we wish. That doesn't mean, however, that we can do anything we want, anytime, and we won't be damned. We, as property owners, have an obligation to our neighbors to ensure that what we choose to do on our property, in an attempt to enhance our lives, that it does not have the unintended consequence of lowering our neighbor's quality of life, his property values, his health, or his ability to use and enjoy his property as he wishes. Your rights as a property owner extend only to the point where they begin to infringe on the rights of another. In other words, the right of one property owner does not supersede the right of another property owner. We feel that our rights as property owners are being threatened and infringed upon by this proposed industrial energy project. I have a question for you this evening. Other than your family members, what in your life is not for sale? I have heard some people say that everything is for sale at the right price. How about your life? If it's for sale, for how much? How about your freedom? Is it for sale, or would you risk it for a price? Mine isn't. Too many people have fought and died over the decades and centuries to win that freedom for us, and countless others have stood upon and manned the wall of freedom to preserve that for us, including some of us here in this room tonight. Surely you wouldn't sell or put that at risk for a price? And how about your quality of life, your happiness? That which brings the most joy and fulfillment to your life, would you put it at risk for a price? Most of the people in this room tonight have said no. They would not put their quality of life at risk for any price. But now we find out that it may be taken from us anyway. There may be those who would say, "Hey, you had your chance to get paid, but you chose not to, so suffer the consequences." If that is the case, we never really had a choice in the first place. It was either take the money and lose your quality of life, or just lose your quality of life. This has never been about money for us. There are people in this room, and many others, that are not here tonight for various reasons, that were never even asked to begin with. Why? I assume because they didn't own a large enough piece of property. Are they therefore of no consequence? If they had been asked, most probably would have said no. Why? Probably because, like those of us who were asked and said no, they have something more valuable to them than what was being offered. My point is simple. Everything is not necessarily for sale. Money can't buy everything, because money is only one form of value or wealth, and some people value what they already have as much or more than the money. We have heard testimony from experts who tell us that there will be a percentage of our population that will experience adverse health effects due to their exposure to wind turbines. We have heard testimony from people who live near other industrial wind turbine projects, and they have told us under oath of their health issues that are associated with their exposure to industrial wind turbines. We have even heard testimony from our own neighbors and friends, who, when they heard there was a possibility of turbines coming to our area, took it upon themselves to visit nearby industrial wind turbine complexes to learn more. They shared with us the negative symptoms they experienced from just very short-term exposure to those industrial wind turbines. I have no reason to doubt their sincerity or their testimony. Even Invenergy's experts acknowledge that there are issues associated with turbines. Among them, noise, vibration, intussom, flickering, flashing red lights, bird mortality, aesthetics for the lowering of the quality of the view due to the obstruction by 450-foot tall towers. But they refer to these things as annoyances. Are you kidding me? An example of an annoyance is a neighbor who precisely remembers one at 7:00 on Sunday morning. An annoyance is usually a short-term in duration. They don't happen all the time, and sometimes you can actually take some action to mitigate the annoyance. Not so with industrial wind turbines. They are 24-hour a day, 7-day a week, 365-day per year annoyance. You can't turn them off, and they never go away. When you get up in the morning and look out your bedroom window, they're there. When you come home at night, still there. You find that your home may no longer be your safe place, the place where you, returns you to unload the weight of the world. Instead, it has become a source of permanent annoyance, an annoyance that never ends and not be healthy, and will likely become even greater problem as time persists. Ladies and gentlemen, we don't have any of these annoyances now. We don't want any more annoyances in our lives, and we don't want them imposed on us by others. So here's a question that I think we must ask. There may be some of you who think this is an unfair question, but I think it needs to be asked. How many of us, how many of our neighbors and friends are expendable? In other words, how many honest, hard-working, tax-paying, law-abiding citizens of Southeast Livingston County are we willing to put at risk to get the money? Because that is exactly what this is all about. It's about money for a group of landowners, some who don't even live in Livingston County, some who don't even live in the state of Illinois, and others that do live in Livingston County do not live on the parcel where the turbine would reside. And of course, some tax bodies stand, have some financial gain. Regardless of what you think, or have been told by people in high places, nothing, and I reiterate, nothing, in this world is free. Someone always has to pay the price. This project is no different. Every taxpayer in this country is paying to build and operate these industrial wind facilities. After more than 30 years of existence, this industry still can outstand on its own and compete in the marketplace from the sale of the energy that they generate. They are too inefficient, so we, as taxpayers, are forced by our government to pump billions of dollars per year into wind energy in order to keep it viable. Billions of dollars that could be going to help reduce the 17 or 18 trillion-dollar national debt that we experience today. This alone should be reason enough to reject this application. With this project, the non-participating home and property owners in and just outside the footprint of this project may be forced to pay the highest price of all. So if you think you're getting something for nothing, be assured, someone else is paying for it. Invenergy's experts, executives, and legal staff have nothing at stake personally in Southeast Livingston County. When this process, this process is over, they will go home, and I doubt they'll be back. Interestingly, none of them live in or near an industrial wind project, and none indicated in their testimony that they were actively looking to buy property within, within an industrial prod, wind project in order to relocate their families there. To the contrary, all of them are safe from these industrial turbines, and they have no accountability to any of us. I was raised, I'm sure some of you were as well, under a value system that said, "Never ask someone to do something you are not willing to do." This is a core value. This, ladies and gentlemen, is honor. Apparently, some of Invenergy's experts and employees don't believe in that code, because they are suggesting that we do something that they have not demonstrated their willingness to do. I am not impressed with these people's arrogant assurance that we have nothing to worry about, because once again, they have no skin in this game, their boots are not on the ground, and they have, and nothing of theirs is that state. Only the non-participating homeowners and property owners within and just outside the footprint of this project are at risk, and theirs are the voices that need to be heard the loudest. This hearing process has been, has been a long and exhausting journey, and we, as objectors, have spent time and treasure we will never get back to protect what is ours. We are not fighting for financial gain or for anything else. We are fighting not to lose what we already have. All we want is what we have now, and if the quality of life that we cherish so much is taken from us, it will, it will be gone forever. If you believe that wind energy is the answer to our nation's energy needs, and I obviously don't, but if you do, at least we should be able to agree that there must be hundreds, perhaps even thousands, of places in this country better suited for a wind energy project than Southeast Livingston County. One that does not put so many people at risk, and doesn't take such rich valuable farmland out of production and risk its long-term productivity. Remember, there has never been a decommissioning of a wind energy complex in this country. So we don't know if this high-quality farmland can actually be returned to its original productivity after 25 to 35 years of excavation and use as an industrial complex. And who will make that determination? Will it be the landowner, the county, the company? Who? All we have is a plan submitted by Invenergy based on a model, not on any real-life experience. I don't have any confidence that Invenergy really cares if this plan will work the way they say it will. After all, some of us, and all of them, will be gone in 25 to 35 years. Another group of people will be left to clean up this mess. Many of them will be our children and our grandchildren. We owe them something better than that. I am asking the ZDA of Livingston County Board to deny this special use permit, because it does not and cannot meet the standards of the Livingston County Comprehensive Plan.
I've lost my last page. Oh, no, I got it.
Number one, it violates standard one because it is not consistent in all aspects with Livingston County Comprehensive Plan. Number two, it violates standard two because it may be detrimental to endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens in and near the footprint. Number three, it also violates standard three and four, in my opinion, because it is being proposed in a district that is zoned agricultural, not industrial. And would take therefore a, a, we would require therefore a modification of the zoning ordinance to make it so. Number four, it definitely violates standards five and six, because it may well be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity where use is already permitted, or substantially reduce the value of neighboring property. It will also impede orderly growth, development, and improvement of surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the zoning district. Beyond that, I also ask the Zoning Board for Appeals and the Livingston County Board to reject this special use permit, because the majority of the people who live and farm within and just outside the footprint of this, of this project have told you honestly, respectfully, and consistently that we do not want this project near our homes, our families, or our property. We, the people, that's not a catchphrase. We, the people, do not want these industrial turbines. So there it is. There's your out. If someone asks you at some time why this special use permit was denied, simply tell them the truth. Tell them that the people in the area that were going to be forced to live around these tur, industrial turbines didn't want them. That is really what's important here. So please remember, if you are going to err, always err on the side of caution. Please do no harm. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time and attention. May God bless all of us.
Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions? Mr. Blazer, do you have any questions? Mr. Ambrose? Mr. Lucan, any questions? Anybody in the audience with questions, Mr. Ambrose? Anybody in the audience have questions? I want to thank you. Please state your name for us, and go ahead with your question.
Well, the question, she's always been sent to me, and he's kind of like, "Oh, figure it out." Tom, you are a farmer.
Yes.
In your opinion, when turbines coming into our area, and as a farmer, how much of that area for the wind turbines going to take out of production?
Well, what I've heard, and I know I've heard in this area, I've heard anywhere from three-quarters of an acre to an acre per turbine. So if that's accurate, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 130 to 40 acres.
And how much is that in your revenue that you're not going to be getting from your costs?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is a representative's question.
I'm just asking if that's true of a farmer.
Yeah, she's been asked a question. I thought the rule, Mr. Chairman, was that parties are represented by counsel, if their counsel was required to ask questions. No, I don't know. That's been the rules of day one, Mr. Chairman. All right, hold on, hold on. All right. All right, Mr. Humbrooks, go ahead and sit down. Mr. Lukian, you are represented by Mr. Lukian, so we'll have to stay consistent with our process.
All right, thank you.
Anybody? All right, thank you, Mr. Humbrooks. All right, next one. How much presentation do you have, Mr. Hayes?
Maybe 20 minutes.
Okay, this is new stuff, like I talked earlier.
Yeah, maybe it could be shorter, possibly, than 20 minutes, my representation.
Okay, let me just, just kind of be exact here. Ruth Wessels, Ruth Wessels, Mary Russell, any of these names have a shorter presentation that might fill our space? Ken Zimmerman? Dieter Elber? Mr. Hayes, it's you. Go ahead, let's do this. Lots of more to be followed, man. We'll have a good pulse on where we're at in regards to individual witnesses. I'm not sure which number we're on tonight. Maybe, maybe seven, so we're doing pretty good. We started with 20-some, gets 14, 13, something like that. So we'll work through everybody as best as possible. If you know you're going to testify, or if you're prepared, be ready to go in these next couple nights. So if you want to reiterate that, just a, just a couple other kind of statements. If we're looking at, if you have testified previously or are set to, you will have the opportunity to make a closing statement. And I want to, I just want to throw out there, there's a very good possibility that we're going to tie them at those closing statements, probably around the two minutes. Two minutes where the closing statement is. We feel that we've given everybody enough time as they testify that the two-minute idea is that we're good for the final closing statement. So...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I think it would help to clarify that, in my opinion, I don't talk so long, you know, are not even the court.
We'll all have to drop it. Maggie, we'll all have, all but one have to drop it.
All right. The official legal decision is, if you are represented by Mr. Lukian, you do not, do not have the opportunity to make that final closing statement. I think the best, the most efficient way to throw this out there for closing statements, and I think it seems logical to me, is we'll take the number of individuals on Mr. Lukian's list that he represents, multiply that times two minutes, and that's how long Mr. Lukian gets. I think that, being fair, Mr. Blaser, if you'll agree with that on the closing statement side, we'll take whatever his number is and multiply it, we'll give you the same amount of time.
I lost you, I'm sorry.
All right, on closing statements, now this is past rebuttal, circuit rebuttal, everything that you guys have worked out.
Right.
Closing statement, final closing statement. We're going to take it, we're going to take Mr. Lukian's list of individuals. We give every individual two minutes. We're going to multiply his number times two minutes, wherever that is. That's how long he has, and he may not choose to use it. Mr. Blaser will get an equal amount of time.
Understood.
And then for everybody else in the audience that wasn't represented by Mr. Lukian, they'll get theirs a minute. Does that seem?
It does, sir.
All right, very good. Mr. Hayes, you look like you're ready to go. All right, Mr. Hayes, let's get you sworn in. Mr. Hayes, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you shall give this page now here shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth self-yout? All right, please state your name and address for a first order, and go ahead and begin.
John Case, Aurora One, 603, South Jackson, Delaware, Illinois.
Mr. Hayes, if you've got a microphone, you've got to use it.
I'll try to make this as brief as possible, there are some things I might skip over a little bit to, to do, as Mr. Cornell suggested, and try to get right to the new stuff, is what I'm going to consider new. I'm just, I'm going to give you some personal information first. My background, I lived in Pittsburgh the last 24 years, taught in a very simple school district for 30 years and eight years down the road to Hilton. Have a bachelor's degree from Long Island University, major in chemistry and math prior. Have a master's degree from Eastern Normal University in physical science. And this was a special master's-type program for people who were teaching, so it was under the physics and chemistry departments jointly. And the main reason I went to get the master's degree was to improve my physics knowledge because that's one of the subjects I was teaching. And so I took all the classes I took as part of my master's class. Classes were in physics, with one exception, one was a chemistry class. So in other words, my master's work was in physics. The class I took covered all major areas of physics, including wave, sound, ultrasound, infrasound, and all the other areas of physics that wouldn't contain necessarily great detail to these proceedings. So I had a pretty strong background in understanding of science. I also, though this isn't important, but I did participate in three summer-long workshops whose primary goal was to improve the teaching of physics in generally the United States, but particularly in small rural schools such as Perry Central. Now, I've kind of seen a pattern that a lot of people testify that they're not qualified to testify, so I thought I'm going to throw it in there. My testimony might be referred to as invalid because they do not have a special certification such as a medical doctor, an acoustician, an appraiser, or other specialized certifications. Testimony I would present does not require special certification. My science background is more than sufficient to read scientific standard conclusions. In addition, my background gives me the knowledge of turboacoustic valve and bio-scientific study. It also gives me the ability to look at, figure conclusion, my opinion, anywhere, this is my opinion, and I can, I feel I can extrapolate to from one area into another area, and I hope you will be able to see my connections. So, but I'm very new to that area. The, when I was thinking about this presentation, my main goal was to try to demonstrate to the Zoning Board of Appeals that the, there were several things about this project that doesn't meet the standards for special use. We've been hearing a lot of that. And I want to try to kind of make a point as to not just that, but as to why some of the expert testimony that was presented might not be as valid as they might have been presented as. So I just thought, oh, I'm going to approach the, start with standard two, which part of this case was detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, health of our general welfare. And I put that in there because of, there was a gentleman here who did talk about health, and his name is Ellen Bogum, I'm sure you're perhaps quite right. I may have remembered him, he was our expert witness on sleep. And one of the statements that he said, there was no evidence linking wind turbines to physiological changes in humans. And he may not use the word physiological, but I think everybody understands that physiological would be like headaches, sleep disorders, and all those kind of things that have been pointed out as caused by wind turbines, at least proposed by wind turbines. And when he made that statement, I had to agree with him because I do want, I can find any proof. Well, we did have a very prominent, he has a report on a yeast study that proves that turbines causes physiological change in yeast. That was a cortisol increase. And geese are mammals, same as we are, so that's possibly true that you could try to extrapolate that to, to humans, but that's coupled up with the, so unfortunately, that's not absolute proof that these turbines are affecting people. Then it took a few along later, after Mr. Ellen Bogum made his testimony, it was the Cape Bridgewater Study. And I'm certainly not going to go back through that, I have it up here, you can try to read quickly, but this, this study actually did prove that turbines produces logical changes in humans. This study was published after Ellen Bogum's presentation. So what I'm saying is, yeah, when he made his presentation, there wasn't any proof, but now there is. We can skip, skip the first paragraph, send, this was just kind of covered Tuesday night a little bit. And it just was, but I didn't ordinate my testimony about the people, so I didn't know what that was going to be given by this fair. So I'm going to just skip that part, the best one is not new. And this next page, and it says the same thing, it's just part of what was given on Tuesday night, not a whole lot different there, so I'm going to pretty much just skip that part, too. But I did come up with an analogy because one of the things that, when Dr. Bogum's testimony, it was so interrupted, I had concerns about people who were in the audience really being able to follow, so I did ask a couple people and talked to one who totally missed the message of the Cape Bridgewater Study. And they kind of thought it was because it's so broken up. So I thought, well, maybe I gave you an analogy of that part or something that's a little different. And this is what the Cape Bridgewater Study, this analogy, took place. A friend of mine in another state makes a bottle of it now, looks like him, I don't know why they do that, but at 8:00 a.m. he strikes it, and I get a headache in a different state. I have no idea why, idea why I got a headache, but then at, say, 9:00 o'clock, he strikes again, I get another headache. And I have no idea why I'm getting these headaches. And he continues this. Then in the later time, I talk to my friend, and I find out that he's been, been doing this. I had no idea that he's hitting it down at one time, but I kept getting headaches, and I was writing down my own journal, and they all matched up perfectly. So, you know, you can draw a cause-effect from that, you know, that he's racing out, I get a headache, and we know that's not a good situation. But that's what happened at Cape Bridgewater. These residents were writing down things, they were, the physiological change, and the most severe ones occurred when the turbines changed power, like 20% away. Stirred up, stopped, or just increased power, decreased power, their sensations went all the way up towards the top of the charts, and they matched up perfectly. And that is a proof, there's something, doesn't say it's infrasound, or that's what I think. There's something to the turbines that's causing this change in these peoples. So to me, there is proof there are physiological changes being caused by turbines. I would say that there that does, that proves conclusively that turbines do affect our health and the health of our general welfare, so that's reason right there to vote out. That they cannot, these turbines cannot affect our health according to the standards for special use. And their experts came in, and pretty much all of them met those criteria. There was nothing at all. Ellen Bogum says there was no health effect caused by it. So I was really curious about that, particularly about that for Ellen Bogum's testimony, and so I went out and I looked for wind studies from wind turbines asleep, and there aren't any, you just can't find any. But I thought we, I was still wanting to look up about sleep and see if anything I could find. And I was able to find a study that did include wind turbines as sleep disturbance, and this sound study was performed primarily by three investigators with some additional people, and one of them happened to be Dr. Ellen Bogum, who included a testimony here. And part of his testimony was, turbines do not affect people's sleep. He would, as he said, he would look for other causes, something other than turbines, whether it be sleep apnea, mental illness, whatever it is, and something other than the turbines, is what he said. But is that what he really believed? Well, when I got looking at his study, I came to some of the conclusions. So, those people who have the printed ones, this is, you know, can you afford to do that? Excuse me for a second. If you get the Ellen Bogum Evidence-Based Science Beats Evidence-Based Medicine, the Sound Sleep Study, it's the fifth one. If you look at, towards the bottom of the first page, principal investigators, and you'll see there's three up, and the third one down is Jeffrey Ellen Bogum, the man that testified here. Now, I'm going to ask you to turn to page VIH, which we're only at seven. Okay, now, realize I don't have this up here in the slide for those people in the audience, I apologize for that, but down at the bottom of this page, for the people who have the paper copies, there's a little last paragraph that's under the problem. And remember, this is a study that Ellen Bogum and other prestigious doctors have put their name on. That means they believe this stuff. They wouldn't put their name down for something they didn't believe in and were very proud because Ellen Bogum had found at least three press interviews that he did about this study. So I know he's quite proud about it. Now, here are one of the things that I found and I'm impressed here that we can attribute to Dr. Ellen Bogum and the other people who published this study. They have here a quote... They, they have here a quote, disruptive and/or limited sleep has been demonstrated to have adverse impacts on several important health measures and outcomes, including blood pressure, weight gain, heart disease, pain, stress levels, and inflammation. Now, I, this basically, I just wanted to bring out the fact that they do believe that, uh, interrupted sleep is gonna cause health issues. That's one of the things they put in it. Now, I'd like you to turn to page, uh, eleven, V X I. And, uh, before we go too much further, I will give you a little bit of background about this study so that you know what it, what it is. This study was performed by Ellen Bogum and others to investigate the effects of sounds in the hospital on patients' sleep. Because they, one of the main complaints that patients in the hospital had was their sleep was being interrupted from all the noise in the hospital. And since you can't do experiments on sick people, because that just wouldn't be ethical, they did recruit some people and got it down to twelve people that they ran through a sleep study, most of which were young and were all healthy and, and good candidates for this sleep study. And if any of yous ever had one, I know what that is. They put you in a room, they wire you all up, and all kinds of wires are over you to see how you sleep. And then, uh, they, they know what's going on. And then what they did was they exposed them to, I believe it was fourteen different sounds that are common in a hospital, uh, throughout the night in various increasing volumes, just to see what the effects were making. That's basically what this sleep study was. And you think, well, how does that apply to wind turbines? Well, I'm going to try to show you that. Because on page eleven, it's about this quote, with regard to other stimuli, those were shifting contours, power dispenser, door closed, toilet flush, ice machine. And what that's saying is, this was an electric pump. Power dispenser for candor, or zzz, for candor, zzz. What they mean by shifting contours, things that aren't constant, ice machine pops out the ice, and it'll clunk, makes a noise. So it's the kind of things where the, the noises were not continuous, like running fan. Tended to be more arousing than those of continuous contours, traffic and laundry cars. One possible, this is my opinion, one possible implication of this result could be that a sleeping person is more likely to be aroused by the pulsating sound of a turbine wave than continuous road traffic. And what I'm saying is, if you live in a neighborhood, you got a lot of road traffic. Yeah, you, you probably can sleep through that, and you sleep. But when you have a plane on a big, uh, industrial turbine on line, and it's gonna phew, and then thump, you're getting that amplitude modulation. And it's not, it's not every, maybe a second or one point two seconds. This variation in the contour is more likely to wake you up, is what, um, saying that people in this study found that, that to be true. Now, they didn't do it for wind turbines. Trying to show the connection here. Okay, um, I'll, I'll come back to that other thing, uh, leave a little bit. But on page twenty-nine, the last paragraph. And this is what I found very interesting about this study of Dr. Ellen Bogum, who was here testifying. He, uh, his other, uh, study members found that this statement was important enough to include in their study, even though they didn't study wind turbines. They did, they did, they were aware of the helicopters while they, um, hospital and other things, uh, maybe near the hospital, we hear, where there was a lot of road traffic. They were aware of the noise than just those inside the hospital. But this one thing they included, a newly reported concern of rural settings. How do you like this one, pardon? Um, where regions have shown varied flow and noise of sound levels, this is the installation of wind turbines. And Ellen Bogum's saying, this is a concern. Turbines in rural settings are, are, you know, as far as disrupting sleep, which to me is just the opposite of what he said when he was hearing the testifying. Some citizens, even those who had expressed support for turbine installations, have reported sleeplessness and other health and quality of life problems because a characteristic sound includes significant low frequency exposures. Consideration may be needed in planning adequate hospital building envelopes. And when they mean envelopes, they're talking about sound pollution in the hospital. As well, as we already said, you can figure that out. That's what they mean by envelopes. In some rural settings, future, okay, uh, future research should explore sleep disruption from low frequency sounds, especially related to wind and turbine rotational speeds. Well, here they're saying, you should be doing, there should be more research in this. Well, do you think about this? This last sentence contains that phrase, explore sleep disruption from low frequency sounds, especially related to wind and turbine rotational speeds. Well, as Ellen Bogum said, they don't disrupt sleep. They don't disrupt sleep, then why would you need it's work? You know, the fact that you put in there, need its work, tells you, he's acknowledging that turbines are gonna disrupt sleep. It's by what he said. And you gotta remember, this is his wording, not mine. This statement about turbines and sleep disruption is in Ellen Bogum's noise study. The statement clearly communicates that wind turbines do cause sleep interruptions, and hospitals in rural settings may need special building design to keep turbine noise within the hospital. Uh, there is a, and now one of the, the people, it's, um, I think it's hey, sad. Well, yeah. Well, let's see, yeah. Hey, sad. On the, um, uh, this is, uh, this was a, um, it's just a press release, sort of. Uh, and, um, an interview was done with Ellen Bogum. By, um, I think it's probably a television station, but then they sometimes post on their websites the, the stories. And I think that's what it's from. But it was, and just because it had some different wording, I may not say anything new in, in the study. But there's a little bit of deep, uh, different wording that I, I find interesting in here. And it's down on the tenth paragraph on this paper. It starts with the other surprises, if you'll find that. Okay, here's what he, um, put, uh, states there. The sleepers' heart rates comparatively jumped as much as ten beats per minute as they were aroused, the researchers reported. And they didn't remember most of the disruptions, even though writing recordings clearly showed your sleep was interrupted, would suggest that patients' complaints are underestimating the problem. What that's, what is, what was going on, and this is, you know, I actually had a headache. I had no idea why I was so tired until I had a sleep study. I didn't know, I was waking up all night long. I didn't know that. Well, that's what they found to be true for these patients, that there are people that just went through a sleep study. So I'm gonna get down to this, this quote by Ellen Bogum. He said, my God, we delivered one hundred sounds to this person and woke them up forty times. And they're reporting to us just a couple of wakeings, Ellen Bogum said with disbelief. What does that mean? Well, this is where my science background comes in and tell me, uh, tells me the following. The above study research indicates noise. And I'm gonna tell you, wind turbine noise is noise. You do hear the same thing here, I know it's. Can involve an interrupted sleep, and the sleeper may not even be aware that their sleep was interrupted, interrupted by the noise or the source. There are many reported cases of sleep interruptions from a wind turbine. I believe from the test results that additional people are having interrupted sleep and are not aware of this fact, and therefore are not recording turbines that are interrupting their sleep. That an interrupted sleep is harmful to health. And that clearly violates all the standards of special use. And I, I, that's a real concern, you know, if you're sleeping, you know, nearby the turbines and having your sleep interrupted, and you might not even know, and might just wake up tired, and not really know that the turbine woke you up. That's, that's something that's, that I consider new. Uh, and I consider it important, and something you need to think about. This study by, this study by Ellen Bogum and others analogies that turbine noise can cause sleep interruption. Ellen Bogum testified that turbine noise does not interrupt sleep. This study by Ellen Bogum, who authored, and it should be two thousand and ten. I, I think I looked at the press release, and it may have said two thousand and four or something, I got the wrong way there. This has been done in two thousand and ten. Brings up increasing concerns of low frequency turbine noise disrupting sleep, especially in rural areas. Ellen Bogum's testimony was a bridge with Martin Herring. It is contradicted by the beliefs he supported in his research study. His change of opinion concerns me greatly. Based on Ellen Bogum's beliefs, sent in this study, and the fact Ellen Bogum was compensated for his testimony, leads me to strongly question the validity of this testimony. So I hope I, I made my, uh, it clear that I don't really believe Ellen Bogum's testimony was what he really believes. And you, you, there's his words in this study. I'm, I just pointed out, and the fact that he, he even included information about, to believe wind turbines disrupt sleep. So you'll have to be the judge for yourself on that issue. And then there was another idea that I wanted to quickly go over. Uh, and then that really had to do, uh, with Mr. Hancock's testimony. He, the noise guy, wanted to came up with decimal readings for the, the different frequencies. But, um, the, the first part here is really not new. The eyes put down other reason, though, now is the fact that predicted ISO models, decimal values do not include sound, sound injuries do have two modulation in resonance.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I object to this portion of this witness. This is already an analogy, he's not an expert in acoustic.
I do have a very good, strong physics background in sound, and I got A's on my class.
Well, I congratulate him on that, but I can assure him I didn't get any of the physics. Um, nevertheless, he's not an acoustician, and he's not an expert in noise.
There, there has not been any testimony that says that acoustician is necessary to testify in these types of physics issues. There's sound. It's a sound issue, not a acoustic issue.
Sound is not acoustic. All right, Mr. Chairman, just, let's keep this on the physics level and just keep rolling with it. All right.
But basically, I just, basically say that, um, that there are a couple of things that aren't included in the ISO, one would be resonance. I thought about demonstrating it with the equipment that I've brought in, and kind of big, and, and head water, it's nasty, so I decided not to. And the other thing that I mentioned earlier, over Moniat, uh, cross-examination of Mr. Hancock, and it was amplitude modulation, and the two units, and they got locked. And, and that's not included. So when they tell you that the numbers they have, when you start looking a lot, those numbers are at maximum values, and they haven't included other sound that, that, that can end up with higher amplitudes from the turbines. To me, that's not quite right, but that's the way it is. So I, I just threw that in. Now, the other thing that I wanted to make a quick comment on was the, uh, one of the purposes of the Calbridge study was to prove that the sound levels at Mr. Hartke's house did not exceed Illinois Pollution Control Board maximum values. The data provided for the study did not contain all vital information needed to determine the validity of the study.
Mr. Chairman, I object to this, this behind the skeleton's persons expertise. It's not believable.
I, I looked over the data, and I can tell you, because I, I, I look at things, I know. I know better than Mr. Blazer about science.
Physics is physics, and you've interpreted the data from that. So we can't, you can't, can't keep talking about the Calbridge study. You, you, you aren't qualified, well, I shouldn't say that, but in the minds, in, in this setting, you're not qualified to interpret the data I was looking for.
I, okay, I'll, I'll honor that, I know, okay, that, that will be fine. Uh, then, uh, I'm not really trying to interpret the data. That wasn't what I was gonna do at all. That is true, but that's okay. Uh, the last bullet I have on this one here, uh, this, this, I encourage the California Department to do. I'm gonna encourage California Department to request the operating output megasongs from all individual turbines during the Calbridge study. And then if you need to be more transparent. And the reason for that is, when, when, and this is already in the testimony, this is not new, this is doubt. Without knowing the energy output, and the energy output that's related to the amount of sound that exists of those turbines in Mr. Hartke's house, we have no idea.
Beyond the skeleton's persons expertise, it's not believable. He's now testifying on acoustic.
This is R E C R, interpreted the data.
Another concern I have in Calbridge's study concerns the statement and the conclusion. At location prime two, which is located similar distances to.
Same objection, Mr. Chairman.
Now, he's got objection for, he doesn't want the truth to come out. And I'm not interpreting it, you know, I'm just gonna show you I'm not interpreting it. I'm not reading.
So far, always want us to read the Calbridge study that Mr. Blazer put into evidence. I don't know what the objection to that is. If you look at the next paragraph.
You know what, when it gets, when it gets to it, then you can object.
I didn't interrupt you, counsel. And again, the only one who can get you right. If you let us, that's paragraph, Blazer, you've been, you've been, you've been.
Hey, hey, you've been doing this for twenty minutes tonight. You guys are, it goes longer.
Well, then, let's, let's get through the testimony. You can, you have the right to decide whether he has the.
Let's build here.
Let's be careful not to interpret the data in Calbridge study.
What I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna go down twice. Then come back and look at it, maybe, not agree. But I, I think what I can do then.
Okay, let's be careful, listen.
Don't lose this, this one, show up here really quick.
Okay, but it's an evidence, so now we're repeating everything that's previously been submitted.
No, this is why he has to do that.
Let, let's see how we do. You're at the end of the slideshow. You need to advance pace.
Okay, okay, now. Um, the Calbridge study, I looked at it, uh, because of one of the conclusions, uh, Mr. Hancock, not me, it's Hancock's. His conclusion was that all of the decimal readings that were, um, found in Calbridge study were within limits. And I don't know for sure, but I, I did look at some of the numbers. And some of the numbers were exceeded the nine nine value of forty-one by a little bit. But I also saw in the Calbridge study that he was considering forty-one point four nine to meet the forty-one decimal level. Well, I tried, and I defined where there was any place for anybody around at these things like that, and I just couldn't find it. That doesn't mean, doesn't mean this, I didn't find it. I went to the, uh, National Pollution Control Board's site, the table that says 41. It doesn't say 41 plus, it says 41. But that, that's one thing that was a little bit of concern, the numbers were about. And that came up in the regard too, earlier. But what I did also did was, I looked at two tables. And they didn't print very good, let me see if I can get this to go up. There are a couple of tables, and you're probably gonna have a little trouble reading them. So, I did go ahead, and I took data off those, these two tables, and retyped them larger so they'd be seen. And one of these tables was, uh, analysis of complaint times during the noise study for Mr. Hart's house. And as he testified, that his sleep was interrupted, and that problems eventually had abandoned his house. Well, he was, as was testified, uh, finally, saying that his sleep was interrupted. And this was kept track of by an energy, and it was on, on a sleep study. So, there's a, uh, dates and times and things, when data was collected during the sleep study, and this stuff was wrapped in this table. And it was used to, um, basically say, uh, he complained the most when the turbines were near maximum operating. But, yes. Um, and then we have another table over here. And this table over here has numbers in it that I believe were used to draw the conclusion that all the values, all the values for the, the, um, not exceeding Illinois Pollution Control values at Mr. Hart's house were met. Um, now, these, uh, two tables are, both were 122, that microphone too, for the same microphone, and they do have some common data in this. That means they occurred at the same day, same hour, recorded by the same microphone, and then right, would have been analyzed by Mr. Hancock to get, should get the same results. And so, I, I know, because in, in this table here, everything matches. But I did find, I mean, does meet using his rounding. Some of them were, in my opinion, don't meet, but, but according to Mr. Hancock, ruled because of the rounding. But I did find one over here that wasn't allowed. So, let me go to the table and try to point out to you. On, uh, November 15th, at 4:00 in the morning, this is 24-hour time. The, uh, there's the 500 Hz data, and it could be up to 47 and, and not exceed the Illinois Pollution Control values. And if you look at all these numbers here, they're all below 47, except, uh, the ones on 11:09 at 3:00 in the morning. They exceed the 47, but if you look at the wind speed, it's 7. Anything above, they throw it out. They don't have that, not that you can't hear it, but you can't, uh, separate the turbine noise from the wind noise, the turbulence turbine noise, therefore you can't say that the turbines are making all the noise. So, that, that's still legal, I had no problem there. But then when I went over to the, uh, 1,000 Hz, and I started looking down, you're gonna see here a 3.1, 36.7 and 37 between the two different graphs. Well, they're supposed to be the same number. Okay, well, we did round 36.7 to 37 for simplicity, I don't know, that's what it appeared. And then when you, uh, uh, look at here, that one, of course, would be thrown out because it's 7. But here we had 41.2, 41.2, exactly what I would expect from a scientific study. I don't really expect this. This raises questions in my head, why are you rounding one tick on that again? But it might still be considered fine. Uh, and then it's not something, obviously. And then when you had 11:04 or 11:05 in the morning, you had values of 38 and 38. That was pretty good, it's hard to say. Well, on, uh, November 9th, at, uh, at the, uh, Tedlock, uh, these are the two numbers I found. Now, the, the, uh, one for, this 41.4 meets the 99.41 of Mr. Hancock, because he could go 41.49, you know, even though the limit says 41. Uh, but this number here, 41.8, same data. Somehow, this number wouldn't be, and couldn't have made that same length of conclusion at every point. Every decimal reading was a 10 minutes. This somehow, perhaps, we got changed to 41.4. Now, I don't know how that happened. You know, it could be something that's not done, it's, it could be, this is an honest mistake. But if that's an honest mistake, even, I, well, I, if I was doing research, and I had numbers in my results that went right, I would consider that a very good, good, uh, result for an experiment. Now, I would consider, you know, there's something not trustworthy about the data. You can't even keep the same numbers for the same set of data in two different data tables. And, and just, this one here, I'm sure this is the table he used to come up with all of them being 41.4 or less. So, you gotta decide, and this is one of the people out there too. I, I really have some issues with this data, the same as I had, had issues with Mr. Ellen Bogdan's testimony. This just says what I just said. That's all it says, there's no conclusion in there, it just says what I just went over with you. Um, this is my opinion here, right here. It's an opinion that I have. Uh, I don't, I, I really don't have faith in this, I don't have data that's not right in there. I don't know, there's no other explanation, I don't know what the explanation for it is, but even if it were to be accidental, then, oh, I know it. It brings in the flack of all the data, in my opinion. And so, I concluded. I hope the county board, POs, and whole county board will both know. And I'd like the board to rewrite the county board's protect the health and welfare of everyone living in Coward for future wind farm projects. Sincerely thank you for your time and patience, you must stand, Matt Hayes family.
Mr. Blazer, did you want to have students cover it first, or?
What's that? Do I have school history or civil development?
Well, I want to say for, uh, Mr. Hayes, let's look first at exhibit 5, uh, this study by Dr. Ellen Bogdan and others. Um, first of all, I completely agree with you, this is from 2010, correct?
Yes, yes.
And then, could you go to the page, I think you were talking about, uh, Rowan 7, uh, small Rowan 7?
Okay, I'm there.
Okay, you go there. Uh, it's the, the first paragraph of the executive summary, and
Oops, oh. Um, I'm sorry, I'm stated.
Executive summary, here you go.
Yeah, I know, I, I, it's, uh, There we go, yes.
Okay. And, uh, the last sentence of, actually, the last two sentences, I'll read this and ask you a question about it. Uh, this is talking about the sounds that were transmitted. They were transmitted through a radio speakers positioned in a hospital sleep laboratory room. Sounds were delivered in rising five decimal state step exposures from 40 to 70 dB, do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, with steady 32 dB night background levels from Harry Anthony's equipment, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, if we assume an exterior noise level of 40 dB, do you know, uh, what the corresponding interior noise level would be?
I can only base this a little bit on personal experience, not on any technical knowledge I have, having been through three sleep studies. Um, they sample proof, they, they built it where the sleep study is done, so I would expect it to be none of the sound from outside to come in. I never, never seen anyone that did my sleep study, and the sound that was outside came to the inside of the building.
All right, go on. For, I'm asking, only the theory was suggesting these subjects to noise levels between 40 and 70 dB. So, what I'm asking is, if you had 40 dB outside, do you have any reason to dispute that the indoor, uh, conversion of that would result in 19 dB?
Jackson, some facts, not evidence.
I'm just asking with the others. All right.
No, I did not know that.
Mr. Hayes, hold on, hold on. He, he has the test, he told us he wasn't an acoustician. And we didn't let him interpret the data, and he wasn't an acoustician. So, now you're asking the acoustician, acoustician questions.
I just put the record, I'm sorry, put the answers wrong, I don't, it's, it's in the record, it's the, the World Health Organization report. Uh, but I'm here.
And then give the full hypothetical, all the, all the parameters, not just one question, one part of it.
Um, now, going to page 29 of this study, this 2010 study, which I, which you also reported this in your presentation. Apologize, this is the first time I saw this. Uh, actually, your pages aren't numbered, it's, but you know your presentation, you start at page 29. Anyway, this study, um, it actually, final page, I think it goes to the top page, if you're correct, that's, that's where
Yes.
These people talk about wind turbines?
Yes.
Okay. And the conclusion here is, future researchers should explore sleep disruption from these low-frequency sounds, especially as it relates to wind and turbine rotational speeds, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, have you read Pleasant Ridge exhibit 59? The 2012 Wind Turbine Health Impact Study, reported by independent experts Danoff, prepared for Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and Massachusetts Department of Health and Health, which is co-authored by Dr. Ellen Bogdan.
No, I'm not.
Okay. Now, again, because you don't get pages up here from your, um, presentation.
Oh.
Um, it's, I don't know how to identify this page, it's this page. At the top it says, "This study proves conclusively that turbines do affect the public health." All right, and here you're quoting page, uh, small Rowan 11. And then, uh, after the quote, there's a line, there are a couple of paragraphs that start, "One possible application of this result," do you see that? In your, in your slideshow.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm quite doing it, I apologize. Okay, I think I'm, I'm there. Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm not there. Oh, I can just hear it, oh, thanks.
It's the, the line, it's the couple of lines that start, "One possible application of this result."
Yes.
That's not Dr. Ellen Bogdan's side, that's your language, right?
That is true. I thought I made it clear, but maybe not.
And then, uh, in referring to your exhibit 7, this article from 2012.
Yes.
Um, and again, this is from, um, okay, the top of the page says, I follow this statement. Oh, there you go, yeah, there it is. Thank you. Uh, in the, in the fourth bullet, uh, the blue wind turbine noise is noise, that's your, that's your language, right?
That is, that is my language.
That's true. This article did address wind turbines, correct?
It did not.
That's all I have. Is there anything else, question?
Yeah, one, one question. Mr. Hayes, when you referred to Dr. Ellen Bogdan in your PowerPoint, it appears to me that you quoted, you put quotes around every statement that was to Dr. Ellen Bogdan, correct?
Sorry, I didn't.
When you, in your PowerPoint.
Which, that, you have that part here.
In your PowerPoint, and this is, so, in your PowerPoint, when you were quoting Dr. Ellen Bogdan, you put quotes around those statements, correct?
Yes, I think I might have missed one, some, I thought, when I started to read it, I thought, so I might have messed up in my typing. But yes, I put quotes around one of his statements to, to draw attention, they were from him.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience with questions for Mr. Hayes? Anybody? Anybody, nobody? Anybody? All right. I understand, Dr. Bogdan, DBA. Mr. Hayes, thank you.
All right, just a quick reminder, Monday, the 13th, at 6:30, back here at the Walton Center. Uh, just want to remind everybody that these statements possibly set the test by, remember, new information for life, that can hurt a lot, you don't need to repeat. All right, with that, we motion recess. Bits of motion, five seconds. Keep your segments all in favor.